Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. It is June 23, 2021. And we are experimenting a new model tonight. And this meeting is still a Zoom meeting. So this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state's open meeting law, pursuant to Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the school committee during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. As I said, we are, we, the school committee is here at Gloucester High School Library in person. And we are experimenting on how to develop a hybrid between in-person and remote. So this is an experiment and we'd be happy to hear feedback of how, how, how the public perceives this model. And I would just like to state who is here. We have the Superintendent Schools, Ben Lummis. We have Principal of Gloucester High School, James Cook. We have the Honorable Mayor of Gloucester, Sophia Rameau-Taken. We have School Committee Member Joel Fafazar, and School Committee Member Laura Wyson, and School Committee Member Kathy Clancy, and School Committee Member Samantha Watson, and Vice Chair of the School Committee, Melissa Texera-Prince, and myself, Jonathan Pope, Chair of the School Committee, as well as our Recording Secretary, Maria Puglisi. Change your name there. I think I did that as, as required. So, that being said, on this special night, we have Kylie Mion's class, her Zoom class, her remote learning class here is going, are going to, well, Kaylee, why don't you, why don't you tell us what you're going to do?
While I was teaching my amazing class this year, Sophia Smith and I, we decided it would be really fun to learn the Pledge of Allegiance in Sign Language. I was inspired because I was, when I was watching the inauguration, the woman who said the Pledge of Allegiance did it in Sign Language. So I said, this would be a really fun way for our students to all do something together because, as we learned, it was really difficult to all talk at the same time while on Zoom together. We used to sing Happy Birthday to kids and, you know, it'd sound kind of crazy. So we couldn't all say the Pledge of Allegiance at the same time. We used to take turns and someone would say the pledge and someone else would get to hold the flag. They all had a flag at home. But I thought it'd be really fun for us to learn it in Sign Language so we could all say it together at once. So I have five students here with us tonight that volunteered to come on and do the, do the pledge with us in Sign Language to show you what they learned.
And Kayla, will one of you speak out loud or should we speak out loud and you'll sign?
William volunteered, one of the second graders. He said he would say it along with us. It was kind of a pace that we were doing it at, so that would be perfect.
Okay, so will you join us in the flag salute?
I pledge
Allegiance
allegiance to the flag
To the flag
of the United States
Of America.
And to the republic which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wow.
Thank you. That was great.
So much.
That was the best Pledge of Allegiance ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, second graders.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great summer.
Thanks for joining us.
Tell your parents you were ice cream.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to oral communications. At every, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and add a debate be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the Recording Secretary. The school committee chair shall have, will, shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That being said, is there anybody who would like to address the school committee under Seeing none, I'm going to close oral communications and we'll move on to the next item, which is, I believe, comments from the chairperson and recognitions. And my comments are going to be basically recognition. So I will start by just saying, we made it through a whole school year and we ended up with some great events. The graduation was always a beautiful day and it was very well done and just an inspiration that the valedictorian and salutarian would give excellent speeches. And it was, it was just, just a perfect day. And the eighth grade graduation was held outside for the first time that I know of. And it was also a very great event and very well done. And so that being said, are there any other recognitions?
We just want to let everybody know the Gloucester baseball team and softball teams are continuing and they won their second round of their playoffs today. So keep cheering them on as they advance and take on tougher competitions. So good luck to them.
The girls softball team's tomorrow at four, so I'm just going to try to make it after 5:30, yes.
Any other recognitions? Okay, well, that being said, we'll move on to, well, we don't have the Student Advisory Council because this isn't school. Consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like removed for further discussion? Kathy?
I just wanted to remove item E1, just to, just, well, not necessarily remove it, but I just want to make sure we do a special acknowledgement. It's quite a nice gift to vocational program in terms of providing money for supplies that they may need.
Anything else?
I move that we include the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mary Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazel?
Yes. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our deliberations on educational issues. And we will start with the Superintendent's Report, which, and I'll hand it over to Superintendent Lummis.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. So Maria, I just want to show one quick slide about summer protocols to get that out of the way, just update the committee on how we're going to operate, which isn't really new news, but just want to remind you and folks listening what we'll be doing for our summer protocols, for our summer programs. Really two pieces to this. And I've worked with, this is based on DEXI guidance, also Department of Health, and also checking with Care and Carol as well. So that's going to be our, any of our student programs, we're going to continue what we just, what we've been doing at the end of this year, which is of course quite different than what we're doing. So distancing will continue indoors when students are present. Indoors masks or face coverings are required still. And outdoors masks are not required for students who are not vaccinated. Masks are required for adults who are not vaccinated. It cannot maintain free fear of. That's what we were doing in the schools at the end of the year. That hasn't changed. The only thing that has changed is for staff programs or administration buildings or meetings where students aren't present, buildings, the buildings where there are no students. So for example, seating, if students are present, we're in school, so we can have a meeting where our masks, as long as they're all vaccinated. So just to pre-rate that, in this case, we're following state guidelines for typical office buildings, you know, office and professional buildings. Masks are necessary for vaccinated individuals. Masks are required for unvaccinated individuals or outdoors, but can maintain free fear. Trying to sort of normalize, well, follow the guidelines obviously, but in terms of professional, our professional work, to normalize that, that for folks. So, and that's going to be happening at, oh, the student programs are of course at West Parish, Beeman, O'Malley, and here at high school. So then we can go on.
Do I email you something?
I sent you something. But there's also a presentation from Melissa and Alex, which you do or do not have.
I don't know that unless you emailed it.
Can I answer a quick question? I assume the tents are still up at the schools that have some summer programs?
Maria, I just, sorry, you, you are still sharing on, okay.
I know.
For those that had them before.
She's not sharing her screen.
Oh, she's not?
No, camera's still on.
No.
I know they are on Beeman, or high school or not?
No.
No. At O'Malley, I'm not sure actually, but O'Malley or West Parish. It's, Beeman is using the outdoor space for lunches. West Parish may have enough, enough space inside to do problems. I do know though, in looking at our survey results, both from staff and also parents, folks are making room for getting outside. So I'm assuming that'll, that'll carry forth in the summer as well. You can, Melissa or, or Alex, hello, first of all, thanks for being here. Do you have the presentation handy? Could you present it if Maria gives you privileges? Would that work?
Alex, you want to do that?
Sure.
If you give Alex, yeah, great.
It's okay.
Excellent, that's much better, better we're doing. Still trying to figure out how to do this in person.
All right.
Just learning.
Right, so if you've been logged in.
I could have shown it.
Right, so you're on the right track for BNF and I knocked you off, but you're up.
That's fine. Okay, it's his fault. Great, so what we're going to show you tonight are just some of our results from student learning and literacy, K to five. So Alex Osborne and Melissa Francis are here, two of our fabulous literacy coaches we know. And they're going to just give sort of some, some basics around how we look at this in terms of multi-tiered system of supports, and then also give some data from our results for the current year. They're also explaining a little bit about the complexities of using data for this year because we've done, we're doing some new things. We don't have longitudinal data now, or like strictly defined. But I will say this, I will sort of give you the headline, which is, there's a lot of good news and they're here to share the news. So Melissa and Alex, thanks for putting this together, thanks for being here, and take it away.
Hi, everybody. It's really awkward being on Zoom while you're in person, but I'm going to do my best here. So Alex, I'll just give you a thumbs up when, to switch? Okay, great. Um, okay, so today we're just going to look at the student learning and the literacy data. And honestly, it's just an opportunity to celebrate and reflect. So once we get through the presentation, absolutely ask us questions and we will see what we can do to answer all of them. What we found this year, even in the craziness, we had fewer interruptions of learning and we were able to really streamline our approach and really focus on the essentials for the students. And we continued many of our practices. We focused on reading street as we always do, our phonics programs, empowering writers, and we focused on interventions. So when we think of our interventions, we've always followed the multi-tiered systems of support. You may have heard it as RTI. And we're always striving for Gloucester Public Schools to have 100% learners with successful reading. And realistically, we know that 80 to 90% of them should be at that tier one, which is the big blue triangle. And basically that's saying 80 to 90% of our students will be able to receive the core instruction, our normal everyday instruction, and be successful. Then you'll notice inside that triangle is a green triangle. And that's saying 5 to 10% of those students will require not only tier one, but they may require tier two as well, which is an additional support, maybe a double dose of something, maybe a little tweak in the instruction, small group, frequency maybe more, but that's saying 5 to 10% of them may require additional supports to become successful. And then you see the little triangle inside of that one, and that's our tier three. And that's basically saying our students who will require our intensive instruction. So they may require special education, a different programming, a variety of things. But what we're finding is our multi-tiered systems of support is really working well So today, what our data will show is that our tier one core curriculum and the supports we have are working well together. We're showing growth from the beginning to the end of the year. And we're showing growth over time, especially with our DIBELS, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And hopefully we'll see more growth over time with our other assessments. And we really want to speak to the teamwork this year, the flexibility and the creativity that really allowed us to stay, stay true to this process despite the challenging year that we had with the masks. Teaching students to learn sounds with masks is not the easiest task. And teachers got very creative with that. I saw videos, I saw taking them outside, just a variety of ways to still make learning happen. So we really should give a shout out to all our dedicated teachers because it was pretty incredible to watch. So just a reminder, we talked about this at the beginning of the year. We've had a couple changes in our assessment because, you know, why not have a pandemic and pilot new assessments at the same time? So we've taken on the DIBELS eighth, which is really exciting because it provided new information for us to really target students at risk. And the adoption of STAR, which is really our focus for vocabulary and comprehension, which we can dive into more as we go through the slides. So DIBELS, we've been using DIBELS for forever, it feels like, over 10 years. So it still provides that valuable information to let us know which students are being successful and which students are at risk, especially in the areas of word recognition and fluency. But what's different is these subtests provide even more detailed information. So when we go through, you're going to see some slides that show the new DIBELS eighth, and then there will be a couple to show the old, and I'll talk about the differences. Okay, so we're going to go through and we are going to highlight at each grade level one of the subtests and just let you know why it's important and then how well the students did or did not do. So basically, the phonemic awareness is critical in kindergarten. That gives them the opportunity to hear sounds and then break those sounds. So if I say the word cat, they would go k, at, t. And of course, we need speech sounds to map to the print when we read. So it's a really critical skill early on. And if you notice, our kindergarten students as a district were able to meet or exceed the standard, 74% of them. So that's pretty exciting to see phonemic segmentation fluency reaching 74% at the end of kindergarten. And in first grade, we are looking at words recoded. And basically, that is our nonsense word fluency. And those are words that students have never seen before because we're actually making sure that they're using the two processors in their brain working together. So it's not words that you can just remember by sight, it's words that you have to use your phonetic ability and then blend them. And as we know, blending is an essential skill for reading as well. And if you notice, our students, 80% of them in first grade are at or above our benchmark. And you'll notice a new color, I should have pointed that out in the kindergarten, for the DIBELS eighth, we have blue, which means they're actually exceeding the benchmark. So a lot of this, we're talking about the green and blue put together because it's meeting the standard or exceeding the standard. So we have 80% meeting or exceeding the standard. So that's really exciting news. When we see those students in blue, that means they're at the 80th percentile. So those are the students that we can really start to give enrichment, really start to challenge, really start to push into the next subtest.
Could we ask a question?
Yeah, Melissa, I think there's a couple of questions.
So, and I'm sorry if I missed this, the abbreviations across the top of the table, LNF, PSF, so PSF is phonemic, the fluency, right? I recognize that. Are we just kind of walking through those or can you tell us what those mean?
Sure, I can, what we've done in each one is just highlight a particular subtest, but I can absolutely walk you through.
If you want to tell me what they mean, that's maybe helpful.
Starting from the left, you have letter naming fluency. And then phonemic segmentation fluency. And then nonsense word fluency, correct letter sounds. So that means the student can look at a word like MIP and just do m, i, p, but not necessarily blend them together. So they're starting to make the letter sound connection, but they're not necessarily blending them together yet. Then if you notice the STAR, it's nonsense word fluency, words read correctly, which is when they start to blend them together. And then the WRF is word reading fluency, which is automatically recognizing words. Then we have oral reading fluency, the ORF. How many words are they reading correctly in connected text? And then ORF, which is oral reading fluency with the accuracy. So are they making errors along the way or how accurate are they? And then our composite score, which is, the composite score is all of those subtests weighted differently to create one score to predict risk. And DIBELS has done all the research on that, not us. So we have that one score to look at overall, okay, we have again, you know, 75% doing well as a whole. And then if we know those students aren't, we would look back at the different subtests and really find out where their particular needs are.
My second question is, there's, there's two that are already blue. Was blue an option and we just didn't hit that? Or were those two, blue not an option?
Nope, so letter name influence and accuracy, the only two that either you meet the mark or you don't.
Good, thank you.
Laura has a question.
And it may just be that I can't, I can't read all the percentages from where I'm sitting, but it looks like the composite, just by the color graph, like quite a few of the, you know, 80% or above actually exceeded, right? Blue is exceeded, is that right?
Yeah.
So, so I would love to know sort of the percentages, you know, that met and then the percentages that exceeded, it's sort of an interesting number.
We're going to show that with the composite later.
This got emailed, too.
So in the
Yeah, well, I'm going to try to watch both.
So first grade, you can see that the composite score for the district is 44% exceeded the standard and 31% are meeting the standard. So we have 75% meeting or exceeding the standard for composite score in first grade, which is a pretty great place to be after a pandemic missing 60 days of their kindergarten year.
Fantastic place to be.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, moving on. And please interrupt me anytime with questions. And if I can't answer, Alex always can. Okay, so second grade, we're going to highlight the word reading fluency. And if you notice, we put the meeting or exceeding together, which is 72% of our second graders are ending the year at or above benchmark for word reading fluency. And word reading fluency really measures how quickly can they look at a word, recognize it, and be able to say it out loud? So what we're really seeing right there is are they able to come up with the word immediately? So it's really for efficiency and word recognition. We just recently heard from Alyssa Orkin, it's like walking into Starbucks and seeing your best friend right away. You would immediately recognize those features. You cannot not read the word. And that's what we're really trying to get at, is how quickly can they not, not read the word? They want to be able to read that word as quickly and efficiently so that they can get to the meaning, so that they can get to the connected text, so that they can start to comprehend. So we want that word recognition to be immediate and efficient. So that was pretty exciting to see. Again, our second graders who lost 60 days of first grade in-person learning were able to meet that mark at 72%. So that's pretty exciting news. Any questions before I continue?
I have a question. Melissa, are these similar, these tests are given at the beginning of, right, the assessments at the beginning, the middle, and the end? So what you're showing here is the end, but I'm just curious anecdotally, what kind of scores did you have at the beginning of the school year? And is this like a huge leap from the beginning to now? I mean, I assume the beginning of the year scores must have been lower than, than what you historically would have seen.
Yes, and well, and I can show you, we have a, we have a slide that will share that And, okay, so, and we are on to the third grade and we are highlighting the composite score. And the reason we chose to highlight the composite score for third grade is because that's when they're really making that shift from that skill instruction into the comprehension and reading. So we chose the composite score because hopefully what we're seeing is that they are meeting or exceeding in the composite score so that they really can start making that shift. And you'll see that 75% of our grade three students were ending the year at or above in the composite score. So what it does is takes all of those subtests and puts it together. And we can look and say, okay, 80th percentile, 60th percentile, 40th percentile, 20th percentile. And fourth grade, we decided to highlight accuracy because we wanted to show that not only are the skills being taught in the younger grades, but they're really sustaining that word recognition with accuracy. So we're finding that our curriculum is very strong in the area of word recognition. We have 93% reading at core. So you can't exceed the expectation in accuracy, but we have 93% of our fourth grade students who are meeting that benchmark in accuracy. So that's really great news that when they're reading a passage, connected text, they're reading it with accuracy so that they can get to the meaning of what they're reading. They're not getting hung up on the decoding part of it. They're not trying to figure out what the words are. They know them and they can focus on what matters. And then fifth grade, we focused on MACE because it's one of the subtests we don't really talk about as much. It starts in grade two and it is for silent reading, fluency, and comprehension. It's a closed passage, which is actually missing words along the way, and they have to choose which word makes the most sense. So it's our glimpse into their sentence level comprehension while they're reading silently. And you can see 80% of our students in fifth grade are meeting or achieving, exceeding that expectation for MACE. And then what we would do, if they're not meeting that, it's not necessarily letting us know that there's just a comprehension issue. We would look back and look at their fluency and then we would look back and look at their word recognition and we would look back and look at their phonemic segmentation. So one skill constantly builds on the other. So knowing that 80% of them, then we can look at that 20, 26, and 13, who did not achieve that throughout the entire district. We have 26 students who did not achieve that. We can really start to see, oh, it's this student or that student and this is why. So it's really great information for us to have. Okay.
Is there a pause there, Melissa? Any questions before we go on? Great. Go away, hold on to that question.
So it's just a, it's a question I have, I'm not trying to be glassy, but you want to ask a question. Whenever I see such an excess of exceeding expectations, I always go, was the expectation set properly? Because the largest subset in almost all of those charts was, were students exceeding. And especially as you keep pointing out, that they're exceeding after getting, you know, cut off the year before. You know, in your experience running, you know, with this curriculum, do you feel that these targets are, are grade level appropriate?
Absolutely. I can say that with certainty. DIBELS is probably the best researched-based assessment out there nationally. And it's been out there for 20 something years and they just continue to improve and continue to update and they have thousands of students. And they have thousands of students who they um, will absolutely test it out and see what the norm is. So they have done their due diligence with these assessments. Um, so I will say with confidence that we chose the right assessment, there's no doubt in that. Would you agree, Alex? Yes.
And Melissa, um, in terms of the, you know, Dibbles eighth here, with, you know, with the blue, you know, exceeding as well, I mean, that, was that also part of raising the standard again for them?
So I believe that they realized, um, because meeting the benchmark is the lowest expectation, just to keep that in mind. That's where they want them just to make the mark so that you can breathe easy and know that your core instruction will do the trick, right? It's not saying to stop there. It's not saying, okay, you met the mark, now you're good to go and off on your own. You still need that solid, good instruction, but you don't necessarily need that tier two approach with additional or something different. You can be in your classroom, get the core instruction and continue forward and you'll continue on the trajectory on up. With the blue, it's basically saying that you've exceeded that expectation, you're in a really good place, but you can dive deeper into that comprehension and that vocabulary and, you know, continue up that ladder of instruction and find other ways to really enrich what you're learning. So I think it took it to that level, but remember the benchmark is the lowest where we want them to be. It's not where we want to end. It's letting us know, okay, we can breathe easy and keep them in core curriculum. And if we see yellow or red, then we know, okay, we need to do more for this student. We may need to tweak things and change things to get them to the success level.
Thank you, Melissa.
So looking back, and it is comparing a little bit apples to oranges instead of apples to apples. Um, Dibbles next did a really nice job, but like we mentioned, Dibbles eighth provides additional subtests to give us even more information. But looking back at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen was our closest year that we're able to finish the data, the end of the year. Because last year we ended in March and we didn't have end of the year data. Um, so we ended our year in two thousand nineteen as a district at fifty one percent. Since then, we have continued robustly with the multi-tiered systems of of support. And you will see on the next slide, now we are ending our year with seventy two percent. So it's great to see that we were able to continue on the path. Teachers felt they had fewer interruptions this year, we really streamlined, we focused on the essentials. So I think our instruction and our approach um, is really working. And we're not done yet, seventy two percent is good, but it's not good enough. Um, so we want to continue on that path. We want to see more of that ninety percent of those students. So we still have a lot of work to do, but we should be really proud of the work that we did, even considering all the obstacles. Is there any questions about this?
Yeah, so.
You can see the beginning of the data to the end, which I can highlight for you if you'd like. This is the slide that would show that, Kathy.
So being on the left, yeah.
So my, my question is, um, the twenty twenty-one year, it's the fourth graders. And then the last slide before that, they were in the second graders. And since that class seems to be, um, you know, coming in lower than their peers ahead and and after them. I'm curious if there's any, like, you know, any understanding as to what's going on in that one class that the instruction seems to be, you know, not achieving the same results as their peers.
So, um, it's the district data, so it would actually be, you know, many classes throughout each of the schools. So um, sometimes you just see that in data, I can't really speak specifics because we again are only at our own schools, so I can, you know, speak to East Gloucester very easily, but um, I can't really speak to exactly the reason for that unless I really sat back and analyzed every school's data. Um, so.
Is that something of, you know, of concern that that would be looked at? It just seems it's, it's an outlier, right? And that chart there, you know, ten points back and one before they're similarly back. And again, if it is, whether if you were to toggle school by school, if you said, oh, you know, I'm making up, oh, West Parish is having a really tough time. And they're, you know, and it's commensurate with the other four, then you kind of know it's West Parish's class, you know, versus the rest. But if it's, if it's across the district, was something changed that year that they received different instruction is curious.
That's probably an area across schools that we can improve on, do more work on.
Right.
The coaches work together and they're working together with a really, um, with an eye towards their own school and not as much looking across, you know? To identify where our strength areas, is there a school that could need support for another teachers at a different school because they're stronger areas, they're scrappy? So I think that's a, that's a place, um, that we can all, you know.
So I imagine Dibbles, you could run a report by school and check that year and see if it's universal or if it's, you know, one or two schools. We don't know what's going on over there, we gotta get in there and find out because, because if it was two fourth grade classes instead of all five, then that number would be even lower than sixty-two, that's the composite, right?
Right. Yeah, and that's what across this.
I can't say that our ELL population may have been higher coming in that year, special education population. I mean, there's so many variables that go into that, the class could have been smaller, so the percentages are higher. There's so many variables that go into it, but it's definitely something that we as coaches look at at our school level and definitely um, continue the discussion to improve. So Kathy, um, just so you are aware, if you look, we had fourteen percent exceeding in kindergarten, now we have forty two percent exceeding. Um, so that's a huge growth, fifteen percent were meeting the benchmark, thirty-three percent are now meeting the benchmark. Um, in first grade, if I just do the combination of meeting and exceeding, we had fifty-two at the beginning of the year, now we have seventy-five. Um, second grade, we had, you're making me do the math on the spot, sixty, sixty-three percent, I'm a literacy coach now. And then, and then ending the year with seventy-four percent. Um, third grade, we had seventy-seven percent, so we started in a really strong place and we ended with seventy-five. Um, bad day, bad, you know, like it, those little changes happen absolutely in the data. Um, fourth grade, we had sixty-eight and we ended with sixty-two. And fifth grade, we had um, seventy-five and ended with seventy. That will change because sometimes in the beginning, the kids treat the oral reading fluency as a race. How many words can I read really quickly without breathing, without hesitating, without stopping a punctuation? Then they realize the purpose behind this assessment, that we want them to be, become really good readers and focus on the comprehension. So you'll see a variable in um, the meeting or exceeding for sure at times.
Melissa, also just to clarify, um, my ranting that, you know, the, the benchmark also changes from beginning of the year to the end of the year, it's not the same benchmark.
Right, it's a moving target.
Yeah, yeah, it's moving target, exactly, so. And I think also that fifth grade was sixty-five and then ended at seventy, not seventy-five.
Sorry, sixty-five, you got it, thank you. And then.
Help you with the math there.
Thank you. And then as a whole, um, you can see that it was fifty-seven percent and now it is at seventy-two percent. So that's great growth over time.
Well, it's actually, um, I think it's more for, for Ben, although they've, I think they want to chime in, that's fine. So, um, using this, this chart here, obviously, you know, the goal is to have a hundred percent. And so, you know, superintendent, when you look at this, you know, not to diminish the, the huge progress with the, the blue growing, you know? But it looks like a lot of the blue is growing out of the green. Um, the red seems to be shrinking from the most throughout the year, that's excellent, especially up in kindergarten. But still, when you look at that and you go, okay, thirty percent of our fifth graders are not meeting the benchmark for Dibbles. Thirty-eight percent of our fourth graders are not meeting the benchmark for Dibbles. You know, what's your reaction to that? Is that acceptable or is that, you know?
Well, one thing that was, was twenty, you raised it thirty at fifth grade, but twenty-five is pretty consistent. You know, you know, uh, in terms of red and yellow, you know, across grades and sort of stuff and, and also.
In multiple districts or just in ours?
No, no, in ours, and also, also twenty-five is, is about, give her two, in, in the subtests as well. Okay, that's interesting to me, I don't know what it means yet.
Okay.
But what is really great is our, our um, sort of culture and practice of looking more deeply at those individual students. And they're gonna show how, how we can do that with Star. But that's a crucial piece is look at the individual students, look at patterns, whether that is a school or a grade level or cross, you know, cross grade, grade level and sort of stuff. To see those patterns, to see what there are patterns first of all, okay? Um, and, and that's, that's the work, I, a lot of confidence in the, in the, um, in the, uh, there's the coaches that help support and help teachers do and do with teachers. Um, but I also think that, um, you know, Melissa's been really open and I agree with that, that, you know, we want to really hit eight, eighty percent at least of our students are benchmark or see, or at benchmark or higher, just with their construction from, you know, from their classroom teacher. Okay, and then, um, but, but our goal certainly is a hundred percent, you know? And so if you, if you're, the simple answer to your question is no, we're not, we're not there yet, you know? But um, I, I believe that we have good, good core practices.
We certainly jumped twenty percent in two years, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're really on the way and.
And I don't want to diminish anyone's work and diminish anyone's accomplishments, you know, this is certainly progress.
And, and these guys too, especially are, are a good example, is, is having to continue to get better every day. And, and the way to do that is work together is to use data, use our in-house expertise as well as outside expertise when necessary. But no, we have to continue to get better, absolutely.
So my question is, um, when in the fall do you collect this data again? Um, so that we can compare to see if there's any loss over the summer? I mean, I know we've been doing this every year, but it just seems with the consistency of remote learning that I think that's one of the reasons the scores have come up, because of the consistency in, in teaching and learning in general, not just remote learning, but in-class learning. So when in the fall will you be able to report out for us to see if there's been any changes over the summer for those that may not attend summer school or um, keep up with reading or things like that over the summer?
Yep, so we, every year we do it three times a year. We do September, we do January, February, and then we'll do the end of the year. So every year we do three times and unfortunately, there's always summer regression. And we talk about it and we give reading challenges, but we need to continue to say that to parents. Um, it's really about getting them on board and making the children read at home every day because it is something you have to practice. You know, and if you want to get better at painting, you practice. If you want to get better at soccer, you practice. Reading, you have to practice. I mean, think about just all of you reading a passage in the room. Some of you are going to take longer, some of you going to be quicker, but at the end, I would, I would think that you'll all comprehend it. So keep that in mind when you're looking at the scores too. Be slower, some students are going to be faster. Um, in this particular assessment, it gives little glimpse, it's like take, taking their temperature when they're sick. It gives you some information, but it doesn't tell the whole story of the student. And that's really where we come in, in the process. We really work with the teachers to know the entire student have that understanding to really make sure we're meeting their individual needs. So as much as we use this data, we use a lot of information to really target the needs of the students.
And with the um, funding that's come forward from federal funding to do summer school, um, because of the pandemic related to that, have the students in the red and yellow been identified and invited to extra courses over the summer?
Yes, so we actually had a very um, thorough process that we looked at the data, shows the students, invited them, talked with the parents and told them all the reasons why it was important. And many of them did accept and are attending the summer programs. So that was excellent, exciting news for us because we always want to provide opportunities and it was really exciting that we could do that. Um, the Y has always been a great option and this was even better because then the Y collaborated with us, so it was exciting for us.
I think, and I think it's really important for us to look at, um, at how they do um, in the first round.
Exactly.
To understand what we're doing in summers and helping.
And to see if summer school can become something permanent going forward if it's that effective. And I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you both. I mean, it's such an asset to the school district, both of you put your heart and soul into this and it's, we don't get to see you that often and just wanted to take that opportunity and say thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, Laura has a question.
Um, so given this great news and the sort of growing um, blue, I'm just color felt me. Um, are there, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know that you're working on this, but are there sort of um, uh, practices and um, curriculum for those kids who are exceeding, right? I mean, to keep them engaged and interested. You know, sort of how, I mean, that's, it's, all the differentiation is hard all the time, this year it was even harder. But can you just speak a little bit to that as that grows?
Sure, um, you guys are really just jumping ahead here, I love it.
Got a long night here.
On my toes, I have my notes and I'm just gonna throw them out the window. Um, so. Um, so yes, the answer is yes, we're always looking to improve, we're always looking um, to make progress with all of our students. We realized that Reading Street was a really great place to start. It created a common language across the district. It created a, just a common core across the district that every fifth grade teacher knew what to expect, the pace and the rate and what they were teaching. So that was a really great place to start. But we have improved so much that we're realizing we can do better. We want um, a new, we're starting to explore new curriculums so that we can dive deeper, to have better background knowledge, to have better content, to be culturally responsive. Um, so we are starting to explore different curriculums and considering piloting them in the schools um, so that we can dive deeper. So those students who are already at the benchmark will be able to go deeper into the comprehension and vocabulary. Um, we want to be sure that we see the vertical alignment because we know that middle school um, is struggling with that, that the content, knowledge, the background knowledge, we need to start at the younger grades to continue to improve that. So by the time they get to middle school, it continues to grow. Um, so that is one of the things that we're working on. Joel mentioned the, um, what about those students who are still in red and yellow? We are actually adopting early bird screener, which catches them in kindergarten so that we can red flag them earlier on. Because the way our brains are, they are more able and willing really to learn, um, but really more capable of taking in new information. Um, at our earlier age, it takes much less time and frequency when they're young to be able to close that gap than when we've figure it out in fourth grade. So we're adopting a new screener so that we'll even have more information about how the student learns and be able to target their needs even sooner. So we are doing things kind of all over, um, K through five, and we work together really well, all five reading coaches. Um, and Greg is always, you know, leading that and helping us. We have worked with Melissa Orkin, which is the developmental psychologist who works for Tufts. Um, part of the, part of her work was RAVO, which we've adopted as one of our tier two or tier three um, curriculums for students who are in those red or yellow categories. Um, so the work continues constantly, so we are never satisfied until we see a hundred there. We're not satisfied, we're not done yet.
Um, Melissa, I, just in the interest of time, we've got some folks who are, who are also uh, wanna, need to do some presenting as well. Can we skip over Star 360 for now and just go to the conclusions?
Sure.
Because we'll, we'll get back to Star 360 in the summertime and the fall as well.
Absolutely. All right. So basically, just despite the challenging year, I'm learning through masks and social distancing and trying to prevent a lot of small group instruction. We were able to continue to move forward and we are really excited to see that. Um, the teachers were creatively, they were flexible. We really saw growth, as you could see, from the Dibbles next to the Dibbles eighth, not only um, in one year, but in the past years to, till now. We adopted two new assessments um, during all of that and we're learning as we go. We definitely have a lot more to learn about Star, but I think once we have the MCAS data and a couple of years with Star, we'll be able to do that, but the teachers are very excited about what it provides as far as standards and being able to see which standards the students have mastered and are still working on. Um, so I think that helps with their instruction as well. And we're really proud that we're continuing that strong multi-tiered systems of support.
How long does a fifth grade Dibbles assessment take to execute?
One minute.
One minute. And is it, uh, it's all on like app based?
Nope, it's actually on paper, pencil and person to person. So they just read a short passage out loud for one minute.
I'm interested in having them come and give us this great Dibbles assessment. She said, she said, I assume you'll all get this, like, I don't know, it's like, you know, it's, it seems like you still do this. Right? It also puts a perspective on like, you know, buying up in the yellow, okay, well, I have to, you know? Right?
And then the maze is three minutes, just to answer the complete question. So it's one minute for the oral reading fluency and then maze is three minutes that they read it silently and choose the word that makes the most sense.
So Melissa, it sounds like, oh, sorry, no, go ahead. It sounds like these assessments are done one-on-one, not whole class at the same time.
Right, so both is done one-on-one and the STAR assessment is computer-based and that can be done whole group.
Can I just ask, who does the assessment? How is that performed? Does a teacher do it in class or do you do the? Does the teacher do it in class or do, do the coaches go in? They call out individually? How does that work?
So it's, um, it depends, varies on school, based on the resources and who um, is in particular roles. But I can speak to East Gloucester and I know Alex can speak to Plum. I take on certain grade levels and I also have interventionists who will work with them one-on-one. Um, and again, it depends, you want them to be comfortable, you want them to know the person that's assessing them. Um, you want it to be in a quiet place. So we have designated areas in our building. We have designated people who work with those particular grade levels that are responsible to do um, the assessments and they get trained by us um, to do those assessments. So it's pretty.
So as one student's being tested, the rest of the class is continuing with their education? Is that how that works? Okay, thank you, that's very helpful for me.
Those are the questions, actually. Because I want to make sure it was one-on-one and the person will come around. Not everyone is comfortable reading out loud.
Right.
Any, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, it's very impressive.
Thank you, Alex, thank you Melissa so much, really appreciate all your work on this. All your work every day. Thank you.
For having me.
You and all other groups, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Maria. Oh, yeah, we go, so um, Principal Cook is here to, uh, give you update on the high school school group plan.
Can we get an update on the prom too?
I started the prom.
Yes, that'd be great.
So, yeah, prom, right, right out here in the um, uh, the, the area beyond the softball field fence. And hopefully folks will get to the softball game uh, tomorrow. Um, so you'll, you can see where we had the tents, yeah, we had a giant tent out there. It was a beautiful night, uh, at six fifteen, the tide turned and the wind came and took the, uh, all the bugs away. Um, gentle wind, uh, it was, um, so it, this year prom was designed to be just the class of twenty twenty-one uh, attended and they were all, you know, decked out as usual in, in normal prom gear. Uh, we did the promenade as usual in the fieldhouse. And then they just processed out to the, uh, the tented area. And catered by the causeway, so fantastic food, it was really, really great. Kids danced and uh, you know, um, when the end of the night came, there were still students on the dance floor. They didn't want to go home. It was really, it was really a beautiful way of ending uh, the year. Um, uh, the only sad part was normally prom is the beginning of that season. You know, then we have awards night and then we have graduation. So afterwards, a lot of us thought, wait a minute, that was it. And we just, yeah, right, but it was a great, you know, but it was a, it was a great way to end the year. You know, outside, unmasked, all together, um, with the celebration of the class.
That's a better venue than most.
Yes, I know, as a school, right? We're a little bit lucky.
That's what I was saying you think about, you know, just remember, I think when we were in, in middle school, there was still like the semi-formal in eighth grade, like you went and you bought clothes and you would do this thing, whatever. And then I actually like, we went to luau. And that seems so much more appropriate for eighth graders, like what are we doing with this, like this kind of stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Prom is very expensive for the class and it's very expensive for the students who attend personally. When most of, you know, it's the kind, kind of thing to, you know, put out there for past twenty-two, saying, hey, you know, I'm sure Damersport will have us back, but, you know, here's what a ten rental costs and here's what it costs to order from the causeway instead of, you know.
So the discussion has largely been, as, as you were just alluding to about some of the other events. So some of the advisors and some of the students are talking about, you know, the use of our school and the beautiful space we have here for some of the other events that we have.
Sure.
Where's prom might still be, you know, culminating in that Damers point.
Did you get any feedback on the timing of the prom? Like I know we usually do it the night before graduation, which.
Well, we moved it so for the last three years prior to this.
That was true.
This year, we moved it to a week before, so we have a whole week between prom and graduate.
Okay, I thought it was only the past two years.
Um, it was the year after my first year as principal, so this is my fifth year, so.
Third, yes. And it was gas this whole, but something, something along those lines.
Yes, and so we made that change to stretch it out a little bit.
Right, which I think.
And also allowed us to move the awards night from a, from prom Friday, awards night Saturday, graduation on Sunday to prom the Friday before, um, the sub, you know, week goes by and then the Saturday, Friday, we have graduation practice. And we put students back in, we sign the yearbooks and have that fun. Like we did this year too, we got to do that event, which was almost as fun as everything else, just more informal. Then the Friday night is awards night, uh, and then Sunday graduation. So we've stretched it out a little bit, a little bit more breathing space.
What's parent night, the parent prom?
Um, that varies, that's about a month or so prior to, yeah.
Thank you for that, I've been curious.
Parent events too, we'll get back to that next year.
Yeah, listen, students, everyone, everyone goes to the parent prom and then starts after prom. It has a great time at prom, but, you know, I remember it happened to me as a graduating class, I've never been able to talk to them. You know, like, prom is great, but like, we actually liked the, the parent, yeah. You know, prom is great, but that one with like mom and dad, I've never seen mom and dad that, you know, enjoyable before.
Thank you for asking, that's, that's very fun, fun to talk about.
I wanted to crash it, but I thought I'd get in trouble, so I didn't.
The people did come down to take their picture and we kept them, you know, away, we have to keep them at bay. But yeah, a lot of people wanted to see the kids, as they do every year.
Right.
Um, that's one of the things I told Ben about early on, right, is how popular promenade is, right, for our community. And we streamed the promenade as well. So a lot, you know, a lot of people got to watch it, just like we've been able to stream so many events. Gloucester Education Foundation helped fund some of those things, Cape Town Live to do the streaming.
And I noticed a lot of pictures were taken down the boulevard too, which is a beautiful place. So, I mean, it just makes sense to do everything here in the community if you can.
It was a good, it was a good time, good, good way to end the year.
All right.
So.
I assume everything else is supportive, it's just a following, right? Just carefree.
So the, the Class High School Improvement Plan uh, for this year. Um, I'm gonna focus on how we've been able to uh, blend together uh, two, two different plans into one here. Um, so in the next slide, um, some of the work that we, we um, were able to dig into this year uh, was combining the Sustainable Improvement Plan uh, that came about with our partnership with the um, statewide system of support. And you heard a little bit about that from Lynn a couple of weeks ago, right? Similar process at the middle school level.
I'm sorry, Maria, could you present, just so if you're watching at home, it's the full screen? Top right?
Upper right.
Upper right.
There you go, yeah.
There we go, thank you.
How about I could go to the next one?
Right on.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I hope.
Yes, that's correct.
Maria, you're becoming a Zoom expert.
Thank you, Maria.
Next slide.
So the, and then the second uh, plan that we need to weave together is the school growth plan that's part of our accreditation through NEAS. Putting those two things together in the next slide. Um, you'll see in red the elements that we needed to make sure came across uh, to the blended plan. The goal of improving instructional practices, particularly with a focus on higher-order thinking and, and meaningful thinking for students at all levels. Um, the goal of improving attendance, uh, particularly among our chronically absent students. And then to improve that transition from the middle school to the high school. So those elements needed to be blended. And then in the next slide, you'll see uh, in red, the elements that needed to be blended from the NEAS plan, which was creating um, one of the requirements for accreditation is a written curriculum in a standard format for all courses and all departments. Um, part of our focus as a school is on improving civic engagement um, to achieve our vision of the graduate, which is have the skills for productive citizenship. We wanted to improve the social emotional learning and make that really an explicit part of the experience at Gloucester High School. It's part of the NEAS plan. And then finally, we wanted to make sure we were making decisions, we were determining what should be happening in classes, what should be happening in the life of the school based on that vision of the graduate, which is again, based on what are the skills needed for productive citizenship. So blending those together, uh, the, all those various areas became two goals, um, to keep it as focused as possible. So what we're doing in this first goal is really, this is the goal that focuses on instruction and curriculum. What does the learning look like? And so for us, the learning looks like um, a focus on cultural response and instructional practices. You just heard Melissa weave that in at the end with how they're updating uh, the curriculum, right? And, and looking at a curriculum that's culturally responsive. So that's been our focus for the last several years. And what that means is that our, our culture responsive education, um, students really need to be engaged in what we call meaningful thinking. So um, trying not to use jargon here, but actually saying, well, what is higher-order thinking or meaningful thinking? It's analysis, evaluation, creation. So students are doing something with what they learned, they're applying it in some uh, some way. And that's what we're assessing is that application. And then what that leads into, of course strongly, is if they're doing that, then they're achieving our vision of the graduate, right? They're developing communication, collaboration, problem-solving skills that are needed for productive citizenship. What is all that based on? It's based on that written curriculum that you heard NEAS is asking for, right? That's how we get to um, that meaningful uh, instruction, meaningful assessment. It's written down in the, um, in that written curriculum. So that's how, that's one goal. And the second goal focuses on social emotional learning. If we focus on social emotional learning, we'll have improved student wellness, we'll have improved student attendance, we'll have a better eighth to ninth grade transition and a more equitable, inclusive school climate and culture. So essentially, one is a teaching and learning goal and the other is the social emotional learning and the environment needed to really achieve those teaching and learning goals. So here, so now I, you know, wanted to break things down um, into uh, what are the action steps? Then um, this presentation could be sixty pages long, okay? Of course, uh, so, but you, you, you can ask questions, of course, as you go, if you want to dig, dig deeper. So what does it mean to use brain-based culture response and teaching practices? What that means for us is that we continue the implementation of the professional development we've been doing, um, the work we do during the school day and PLC time at the department level. Um, and then the evaluation work, right? Observations by peers, evaluation by administrators that show that students, uh, that, that teachers are able to build their awareness of the relationship between the brain and culture. What is the effect of how we treat students on how, whether or not they're able to learn? That we build relationships, but the purpose of building relationships is so we have a learning partnership with uh, with our students in our building. Um, the term that we keep returning to is the warm demander, right? We are able to ask a lot of our students because we show we care about our students. And then third, what does the destruction look like? Well, every day, we're igniting learning, we're chunking the material into uh, amounts that students can process. We're giving them an opportunity to process that learning, to think it through, to make it their own. And then we're making sure we review that or capture it in some way to make sure that, you know, they, they, they got what they needed to in terms of skill and knowledge. Or if they haven't, we're able to intervene the next day. So that's the, how, what instruction looks like. And the next slide, uh, this is where we talk about the, the vision of the graduate. Again, this extends the previous priority area by identifying the related skills and the purpose of the skills that were talked about in a previous slide. So we're, we want to always be looking at our lessons to make sure that they're incorporated. Communication skills, collaboration opportunities and opportunities to problem solve. Not just to know stuff, but to solve problems with the knowledge that students are, are gaining. And then as we go through this year coming in October, um, folks might remember that our NEAS visit was to have been the day we went to full in-person. It was scheduled for the exact same day, so we were able to uh, move it into the fall. Um, we could have pulled it off, we pulled everything else off, right? It was helpful to not have to do that in the face of. So with that feedback, do we need to revisit um, these skills? The communication, collaboration, problem-solving skills, are there things left out or need to be refined? That'll be a step for the year coming, an action step. The next slide shows how in order to uh, support this, so you've heard from the middle school and from the elementary schools about what intervention looks like, especially tier-two interventions. We just heard about that. That, that concept is relatively new for high schools, right? So we have been able to develop through some budget decisions we've made over the last couple of years um, in support from the school committee, um, implement academic skills and practice classes. English, and then this year coming, English skills and practice classes and math skills and practice classes that take a diagnostic similar to what you just saw that would happen at the elementary level and design interventions for those students. So they're getting a double dose, as you heard about earlier, of um, whether it's the need to develop, you know, habits of a learner, develop particular English skills or particular math skills. Those are those tier-two interventions, which up to this point, students have needed special education services to get. Now we're able to provide it more broadly. Um, the other ways of supporting the vision of the graduate, particularly in communication, is um, getting the keys to literacy training to the remain, new staff and to the remaining uh, staff who have not been trained yet in keys to literacy, to develop those communication skills across, uh, not just in English classes, but across the curriculum. And then um, with um, uh, with John Saruth, folks may know from the community and he's uh, come in and done professional development for us on the dialogic classroom, which is uh, and we've done social studies department-focused, but also we've done school-wide PB. Those dialogic classroom breaks, but really where students work on the collaboration skills, you know, that civil dialogue, right? How do we engage in, in civic discourse? Um, so to achieve that vision of the graduate, we have that professional development as well. All right. So throughout that, and now, where's it written down, right? So you give those, those are good concepts, but it's written down in a comprehensive curriculum. Somehow during all of this, this year, we were able to get very close to a fully written curriculum. And this has been a goal for like twenty years at Gloucester High School. Um, and we were able, we've never been as close as we are now. Um, it's really exciting and, and the teach, the work that teachers were able to do, uh, particularly in that, you know, February, March period, to make sure we, we, we had, got that written curriculum in. Uh, it was really amazing, to be honest. Um, so now we get to review and improve, look for gaps. Where are the places where we, we might not have an, we might have a regular test still and we would want to add a performance assessment where they're applying the learning rather than just a standard test. We're already beginning to look at those areas where we can do more higher-order thinking, more meaningful thinking in not only the assessment, but then the instruction. So those steps are very department-specific, right? It looks different in math than it does in vocational. It'll look differently in the art classes than it does in our English classes. And some of that work started in the summer. Some people are somehow not exhausted enough. But this is, I, I think coming through, this is really nourishing and exciting work for a lot of the staff, right? To get to what they learned and to be able to apply what they learned into quiet, more contemplative moments with their, their peers, you know, to design this curriculum. A lot of curriculum requests, Greg and I fielded, um, I'm really excited. So uh, the next slide, um, shifting gears now to that second priority area, the priority area around social emotional learning. Uh, we've done a lot of work in this area too. Um, so um, to guide the work, uh, to achieve this goal, we have a social, social emotional school growth teams uh, that we didn't run this past year, that we will run again next year. Uh, we have a mental health ambassador team. Uh, I presented to folks about the students who have done some training for mental health ambassadors. It's awesome. We have a mental health and social emotional learning steering committee that has faculty, staff and community stakeholders that we meet regularly to guide uh, research and piling, piloting um, a castle-aligned social emotional learning activities. That's a particular set of social emotional um, skills that students learn. And so um, we'll be piloting a way of teaching that, uh, we'll be continuing professional development as we did a lot of during, especially early this past year, um, in emotion, uh, social emotional guarding and mental health wellness for staff and for teachers. And I want to make a link here back to the idea of how, in that culture responsive teaching model, importance of building relationships for learning partnerships, that idea of the warm demander. We care about kids and because we care about them, we want to ask more of students. Um, but this is not only about social emotional learning, it's also the foundation for academic growth. So in the next slide, um, we'll be working with attendance works in the year to come. Some folks are familiar with attendance works. We'll be reviewing attendance policies and practices. Some great stuff about how we communicate with families about absences. So there's great data about, everyone underestimates the amount they're absent, right? Um, but if you're absent once every two weeks, you're chronically absent. And you've missed eighteen days by the end of the year. That's a lot of learning, right? Um, so communicating that sort of thing, so people are more aware, it's more present in our minds when the families and students are making decisions about attendance.
Can I ask a question? Are we still filing um, CRAs for attendance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, during, you might imagine during the pandemic, those were difficult for, for the, for, um, for the courts and so. Yeah, of course, during, you might imagine during the pandemic, those were difficult for the for the for the for the courts and so on, but yes.
So that's gonna pick back up next year.
And we didn't, it was part, it was on the table this year too.
Okay.
But what we're finding in 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 our initial professional development we did with attendance works this year, that's at the end.
Yeah.
One of the interventions.
Yes, exactly.
For that, those, really, that's a bullet about inter- interventions for chronic absenteeism. For some students, it's about incentives, right? It's it's creating some kind of incentive plan that the student then buys into. With some, so you know, a reward for the student along the way. For for the absenteeism, for other students, it's some underlying issue that's not attendance. But it has them maybe a mental health issue, it might be an issue with a peer or at home. Those kinds of interventions are.
And those things are identified through C R A's too. The reason why I ask is just because of the fact that, you know, Gloucester District doesn't do them anymore and you have to go to juvenile. So I know that's a barrier in itself to have uh an employee out of the building all day long to wait in front of a judge for hearings. So I know that's um inconsistent with what we would expect in our community, but that's the way it is right now. So I was just wondering if those processes were still in place.
One of the tools. But the sort of, but one of the things that's new with attendance works are are sort of scripts and and approaches to having uh more in-depth uncovering what's what might be uh underlying the absence, right? And like, how can, what are, what are some questions, right? There's expertise there, kinds of questions to ask to get underneath before court intervention. And then um our attendance team that we did launch this year, and O'Malley has one as well. We figured out that that we need some tweaking about the relationship between our attendance team and our student study team. One is more about identifying the issues that the student study team, we have a broader group who can bring different expertise from the nursing staff to our uh school adjustment counselors, to the deans of students or present for the student studies. So that's an exciting thing for next year. That ninth grade uh transition, again, we'll be revisiting the school growth team. So the ninth grade school growth team will begin to meet again. In the year to come as part of the social emotional learning. What are s- what are the things that our ninth graders specifically need to use during our extended home room time? Extended home room is something brand new to us, a year, but we we did it this year and we did it the year before. But this, so this will be the third year. And now we're able to develop things that are more specifically geared to the ninth grades. They need different things than whatever class we do. Tier one supports to help ninth graders access the curriculum. In the classroom every day, that's that, you know, eighty to ninety percent that Melissa talked about in in her presentation, those are those interventions and strengthening those. I've taken some uh notes from uh Lynn's work in the middle school on U D L and how that can apply to help us here. We haven't started that work yet at the high school, but it's in the plan now. And then the tier two supports I mentioned earlier, and they're repeated here to help with the ninth grade transition. And then finally, um and sort of ending with something that's really important to the staff and to the students of Gloucester High School. Is creating an inclusive and equitable school climate and culture. So some of the steps, again, I wanted to link back to the culture responsive teaching that I began with, right? That's an approach to teaching, it's also an approach to creating a school climate and culture in which teaching and learning can happen. So you see um the hook ending with that concept. The next slide shows uh work of the racial equity team. Work that this year, again, in the midst of all of this, we were able to begin meeting with the student representatives of the uh of the racial equity team. And one student member will actually be helping us uh choose the next dean of students tomorrow in interviews tomorrow. That was something that was really important for the team's, you know, uh hiring practices and make sure these values are represented in our hiring practices. And then in the um last, the last slide. Is uh I wanted to recognize the continuation of the work of Saga. And it's sort of work they're doing near the end of uh that will be continuing. The example is we had a faculty meeting in which we had a representative from Desi and a former Gloucester High School student and current Gloucester High School students. Do a presentation called trans welcoming classrooms. And that was something we we woven to a staff meeting uh towards the end of the year. It was really, it's really great uh activity and and raised a lot of awareness. Some important vocabulary for our staff to know how to um terms to use in 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 talking with uh trans students in our school and also um best practices for supporting trans students in our school. We have, again, as a budget decision, we have an English uh, an English learner liaison position now. We're able to hire that position, a full-time position to help liaise between the school uh students and families, which is really exciting. To have for the year to come, to help us with increasing equitable environment. And then um our uh particularly our English department and working with our students who raised funds through the Art for Equity. Project uh that many folks here supported. We had a presentation right here in this library of all the books that were purchased. Some of them are for core curriculum adjustments that we're making. To have a more diverse uh English curriculum. And uh others were uh for independent reading projects that we've woven into our uh our literacy classes. So that's, that will be implementing those bits in the year to come. So that's really exciting too. That's our plan. I caught a lot too. I was getting in the weeds there, it's like, okay, it's gonna be late by the time I'm done.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yep, cool.
So um one of the sides that caught my eye was obviously on this talk about attendance. And that, that's speaking with Greg Bach and having a very, that that seems to be um you know, a lot of bang for your buck if you can, if you can solve that issue as far as, you know, the likelihood of of improvement schoolwide, right? And so um you know, that's, that's my personal prioritization. But I managed to hear from you, you know, the the triage, the tiers of, you know, of all these problems we have to work on. Like in, you know, we can knock these ones out early, it'll set the stage for tackling the other ones, as I'm like that.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of um, so two ways of looking at that, right? One is how how you framed it, which is if the, when the kids are here, they learn, right? Teachers say this all the time, it correlates with data that we have about student success. You know, in terms of, especially in terms of passing and doing, you know, well, well enough, right? So that's um such one thing, we we need them here. Um and so learning, so priority this year is to make sure we're, we don't have all the expertise in that area. It's not something teachers may have, but even most expertise. So working with attendance works um in a collaborative way to maximize our prove our expertise and also get help from others on this is really important. The second way of looking at that is it's it's one of the elements that we have some locus of control. But we have less locus of control than we do in some of the other areas, right? So um so prior, so it is fundamentally important and we're putting more emphasis and resources into it than we have in the recent past. But um there are aspects of it that, if you know this from attendance works and you've heard Greg talk about as well, where there are patterns already in play. By the time they get to Gloucester High School that are very difficult to undo. So we want to make sure we're doing well in all the other areas, right, as well. And and then we believe that with the social emotional learning, with improved relationships. And we have focus on relationships for learning partnerships. Along with the support that attendance works, with our policies and communication with families, we'll be able to reduce, do, we'll be able to do what is in, what is in our control to improve attendance. But we also know that some of it is not in our control.
So and the more piece of that is by, I mean, and so I look at it not in a different way, but I think of is what's, what are the external factors that are keeping them from attending? But also then what are the internal factors? You know, what is it about what we're teaching or how we're teaching or how are the relationships or, you know, how are, what are we, if anything, what are, what are we doing to make school more of a pushout? You know, push, push kids out rather than, you know, pull them in. And so that's what, you know, what's the control, it's the same thing. The thing, the factors that are outside of the school's control is where we do this, you know, the campaign with many partners, you know, across the city, mayor and agencies and so on. Because they're perhaps better positioned um in other factors that are um that we, we can't.
And our health department is doing this, sorry, I should send this as part of the.
And literally.
District attorney.
Yeah, yeah. And that's um artists for youth, we're working within it. So there's a, there's a broader, there's a part of health that put together a broader framework, which will be obviously, you want to make, make clear this a bit. But that's the other way to to address those 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 factors that are outside of the school's control, other folks possibly.
And I would highlight, just as you said too, in terms of prioritizing, right? I I see things like um if our instruction is focused on uh meaningful thinking and applying your learning. It's a better environment to be, right? It's there, there are more things to bring a student in, right? When you're engaged in learning that feels meaningful to you, right? That's where the vocational instruction comes in, that's where all of the the diversity of specialization we're able to offer in school across the curriculum. And make sure we're doing the best we can to offer the things that make kids want to come and learn. It fits the other elements.
We're also, Senator O'Malley, um the D A's office gave us fifty thousand dollar grant to actually look at that and what's happening and and what's and they actually superintendent and with the principal um went to other schools to figure out, how are their plans working, what it is? Because sometimes it might not be because the kid doesn't want to come to school, either they can't or there's a reason and let's help them. So I mean, we're starting at a younger uh level to find out what's happening because a lot of kids have been at O O'Malley's school. Some of them, we don't know their circumstances or why they really can't attend all the time and what's happening. And so we're trying to focus on that and trying to help them. And um though the money was not for salaries, so we can use, you know, the board health and other um partners to do that, it's for other things. I mean, at one school they bought them, in the classroom, they had economic, they bought them uh wash and dry because one kid, when he wouldn't come to school because he didn't have clean clothes.
Along those lines, because I know Sam has a question too. Knowing what I know during, what goes on during my day, I know why a lot of kids aren't in school. And I can't help but wonder if we get the community police um involved as well, because they're so close to what I do. Which may help reach out to families as well. So I'm wondering if you're willing to.
The community impact unit.
The community impact unit, yeah.
They're, they're already ready to go on board.
Yeah, I mean, they may anyway, but I mean, just for the the high school level kids.
They're actually, they um Ed Conley has a more plan, we hired another person to be with that team to focus more and, you know, with the um Happy Valley, um to go with more resources in the elementary to get, to talk to the students, to to help out. Because this is, you know what, it, we can't start at the high school anymore. It's not like when we were younger, you have to start the lower level, unfortunately, and you have to really get with the basis because we're diverse. And like I said, um some of those schools, they didn't have clean clothes. And they were too embarrassed to come to school, it didn't have the, it's what's happening, we don't know.
I just remember sitting in the courtroom with Judge Harrison, God rest his soul, would actually talk to high school kids and say, I will pick you up in the morning at seven thirty to get you to school. Is that what you want? And they'd say, yes.
Exactly. You know, back then you had the chance, that didn't work, we tried everything in the state. And sometimes, you know, it's not the right place or the right time, and now it is. And so we just started younger again, so.
Samantha?
Thank you. So one sort of critique that I have of the district as a whole is that there is like a real solid golden thread for social emotional learning between every single school, right? Like every elementary school kind of does it a little differently based on their culture, based on their staff. I would like to see there be a little bit more of a common thread. Would you say that between O'Malley and the high school, there is sort of a partnership? And a common language and a and a common approach to social emotional learning? So that when you're getting the kids transitioning from eighth to ninth grade. They're familiar, they're familiar with sort of your approach.
I I think that's that, uh like, I know that that's part of this work and it's part of the design of our school adjustment counselors. Meeting for um regular consultation with each other, right? So it's not only um just talking to Amy Cam about this, uh school adjustment counselor at the high school. Uh how, you know, we, a lot of the consultation might be uh focused on individual students. But also, right, there's an interest among them about doing a more, more, taking another systematic look. So one of the things um one of the things that came up in in a consultation was how a particular um program used at the elementary level doesn't have a good product for the high school level.
Yeah.
But that a product we're looking at now is compatible with that, but speaks more to high school students. So there's an eye among particularly our school adjustment counselors on um keeping an eye on that threat. And if they're meeting more regularly and having these discussions with each other that aren't just about feedback about individual students, but are also planning. Which is something they've begun to.
A global perspective.
Yeah, it's something they've begun to do. That's really exciting because then when I'm talking to Amy, she's bringing in that little piece of information that I just shared here tonight about the the what's used at the elementary, not having a good product for the upper levels. But then what we're picking, something that's compatible with with that and common language. Um the other part of that is the um you know, uh you know, the ongoing conversations that Lynn and I have about, you know, um everything from culture responsive teaching to um universal design for learning approaches, to our approaches, to the ways that we can uh bridge from the sales approach of the middle school. And what does that look like at the high school level, right? It's that we're not going to have sales at the high school because one of the things that happens to eighth graders, folks may know, is that they're oh, that's, that's a middle school thing. So to bring it into the high school would have all, right? But we can do it without
Sure.
Doing it, right? And and that's what, right, without calling it that, right? But have those principles embedded in uh the the social emotional um in- instruction lessons that I that that were referenced in that slide. I don't want to say too much about the products we're looking at right now because it's still early days, early days. We're vetting and and so on, but uh but those are the two, those are the things we look at. Are these compatible with where the students have come already? And how do we know that? We know that because the S A Cs are collaborating with each other and and able to bring that perspective to the decision making, which is exciting.
Just add, part of that thread you're you're talking about, which I agree with it is is the discovery and the work that James and Amy and I have been doing recently. About that, you know, exact piece of what sort of level of coordination and and not, it's been, it's been, Amy's been doing a great job and sort of at Hopeway. And she's very good at Hopeway, um just coordinating people together and but the question is, is to me to what extent for me something that's a little more um just just formalized to to support them and to create threats, you know? And then also trying to balance that with um how do we plan for that, put some things in place? And not have it just be a thing we're doing that's laid on top and 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 isn't built on strengths, isn't built on what we're doing. So that's the, that's the work, just lastly a few weeks. Um as we're planning extra dollars and expenditures and also coming out of the pandemic. How do we, you know, use the opportunity of such need to really, you know, ramp up towards sort of the other sort of approach you're just trying to. Definitely in 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 working on that and I know that Amy feels a lot of support from both of us in 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 that's being a high priority, I mean, higher, higher than before.
Thank you.
As I said to people, we have two goals, right? And that's one of them, essentially, right? Uh in terms of how we group things, so that's how important it is.
Awesome to have a mental health expert on the school community.
Yes.
I could speak, I could listen to James talk about instruction and uh social emotional wellness. But pretty construction all day long and in the beginning of the year, for half the year, every Friday afternoon, just about, we found ourselves talking for half an hour or four minutes or hour about these these exact things. So um so thank you, James, for um for being as thoughtful, but also strategic and practical and proactive in in this work. Because um it is to a level that that a lot of high school, I said it for all high school principals aren't at. And most of the work we do, what you guys folks have, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this.
I think we need a motion. We do need a motion. We need a motion to accept the uh school improvement plan.
Second.
Okay, uh is there any discussion?
Congratulations, great work.
Okay, roll call vote, Maria.
Chairman, vote.
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Tatum?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Kathy Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously, thank you very much, James. And you've got your work out.
Lot of work to do, for sure.
But enjoy your summer.
We live in Gloucester, it's the best place to have a summer, I don't even have to work, right?
He's developing for me a robust plan for relaxation in the weeks of summer.
Yeah.
It's another plan, it'll be a power plan. James, I see a lot at Plum Cove Beach, I don't see a lot of Niles, up the Niles and below there.
Really, just be, just go away.
I see you attending the Savak Bazaar, you're missing the blog party. I think you should get a little blog party.
I'll see you at Happy Moon Beach, then.
Moving on to preschool, Emery, thank you for hanging there with us tonight for the last meetings of the year. We are getting to work it, so.
But it's great to be in person.
It is great to be in person.
Very productive.
It really, really is. We're going to put it up in a second, you'll see it, and then we're good to go, Emery.
Thanks. Yeah, open it with, at the top.
Yeah.
And then whatever the.
Try. No, actually, don't you.
Download it.
If you download it.
Yeah, go back.
So stop sharing your treatment, it's a hot second, it'll be a lot easier for you.
Thank you for all the tips.
Wasn't your fault, well, you have to push the button, so it was invented.
Yeah, download it.
That's a PDF, you're okay, it's on the slide.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right, Emery, take us away.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Thanks for having me tonight. This is the first time that the preschool has been asked to develop and present a school improvement plan, so thank you. I do want to.
You're welcome.
Anything else we can do? I do want to stress, though, that since we, because of this, we don't have a school site council, as the other schools do. And because this was our first and it was the end of the year, this was a document that, so primarily I put this document together. But I do want to assure you that it is based on a lot of discussion. As with the other schools, a lot of it is focused on how we come out of the pandemic and some of our changed and reduced learning time during the pandemic. And so how do we really look at what, what are, what were some of the losses, were there losses, and how do we address those? So there's, there's, that is what the focus of this is about. And it's also based on a lot of discussion that preschool staff has had over the last several months when, in looking at, when we go, kind of go back to normal, what are we going to be looking for? So that is the basis of this. The other, this plan is really that it's found, it's based on a foundation of the preschool's priorities, which is to be a strength-based approach to education and to provide a supporting environment for our students and our families. Within that concept, concept, we make sure that two-way communication is key. Two-way communication is between classroom teachers, between teachers and specialists, between teachers and students, as well as teachers and families. We really do believe that this is, for many, if not most of our families, this is their first introduction and first exposure to school as a parent. And so it's really important for us to start off on a good foot with our families and to really make them feel welcome and part of that process of public education. We also have had a lot of conversations about the importance of comprehensive collaborative professional development and that that is key and really needs to be strengthened so that we can improve student outcomes at the preschool. So based on that, there are three primary objectives in the school improvement plan. The first is related to student growth and achievement. And really, based on our instruction, we really want to take a strong focus this year on looking at assessment and where our students are at. So we continue, we will continue to provide, as we always do, students exposure to a range of early literacy and numeracy, math concepts, social skills, concepts, and opportunities for growth and fine motor skill development. And as we always do, through activities and play, as well as through structured programs such as lively letters. And then using our, the variety of assessment tools that we have to make sure that we provide assessment continuously throughout the year and that we look at targeted interventions to address gaps in learning. We have, as I mentioned, we have multiple modes of data collection. We are a special education program. So our teachers are, and specialists are adept at assessing and through formal and informal modes of data collection. And we have a unique team meeting model, and through that team meeting model, we will really focus on the dissemination analysis of that data, problem solving, and then decision makings on interventions that are needed. And then classroom teachers and specialists do and will provide classroom supports and interventions for students who need those supports and interventions. Our second objective will be growth in professional practice. There's been a lot of discussion. The district provides continuous professional development to staff throughout the district and all schools. But we really focused on the idea that professional, the growth in professional practice really needs comprehensive and collaborative professional development. And that we really wanted to look at our professional development needs in that comprehensive approach. And so we, and we did have several meetings this spring, late winter into early spring, regarding professional development and what that means for the preschool. And there were volunteers who agreed to join our professional development team. So we now have a newly developed professional development team that will be working this summer to look at our, our needs September through June. And that group will develop a comprehensive PD plan and calendar that we will implement throughout the year. And then in June, make sure that we evaluate the results of that PD. That would be through staff surveys, as well as just conversations through our, our common planning time, time, as well as staff meeting time to determine whether our, that our professional development team this year really hit the mark. And then develop, continue our plan for the following year, building on that. Our last objective, and I know this is a theme throughout, but really focusing on social emotional learning and community, that we will strengthen our school culture through increased, increased classroom interventions, as well as school-wide programming. Our teachers do a great job of implementing, as the elementary schools have done over the years, we have, we have invested in the second step program, which is a research-based SEL program, prevention program. It is in all of our classrooms. Our adjustment counselor also works with our teachers to help sometimes co-teach lessons, provides consultation, provides extension activities for the curriculum. We look, I would like to see us expand that consultation time with our school adjustment counselor to ensure that teachers are, have the tools that they need to not only implement, implement the curriculum in the classroom, but also to extend it through other activities and programming. We also, I also think it's important, and we did have some conversations this year regarding doing classroom inventories to make sure that we have toys and literature that support social emotional learning and social skill development in preschool. Social emotional learning and social skills development in preschools extremely important. We really are the beginning foundations of all of that social emotional learning is based on. It's extremely important. We identify that. And we really want to take this opportunity this year to make sure that we're building on what we already have in place. We also want to make sure, as you know, we were able to at the preschool, to really provide students with comparable classroom and, and specialist hours as we had done pre-pandemic because of a, kind of how we reconfigured our classrooms. However, we weren't able to provide the same level of family support and engagement that we normally do. And so it's going to be really important for us to re-establish and expand those family support activities and school-wide events so that we can really provide that family involvement and that two-way communication that we think is so important between school and families. We have a variety of programming. In the last two years, our adjustment counselor and our special education program leader has been trained with Pathways in a family, family support workshop, which is called Strengthen Families. It, we really like the program. Pathways has implemented that training series over a number of years. We did start offering that in conjunction with Pathways before the pandemic. We would like to re-establish that and actually expand it this year. We find that families really appreciate and find a lot of benefit in that family workshop series. We also have had in the past, through a collaboration with Wellspring, a family dinner every year at the preschool that has been extremely successful. It's an opportunity for us to invite all of our families and our children to come in for an evening to sit down and have a meal together, get to know each other. That is normally something that we have in the fall. Wellspring provides the food for us, and they also provide information to families who are interested in WIC and other types of nutritional support. And in fact, the last year during the 2019, 2020 school year, they also had a family farmer's market there at, at the same time that we had the family dinner. It was a great activity. We talked about, we've talked about expanding that and offering it at least two times a year. We would like to do that this year as well. And then also to make sure that we continue our inter-school and inter-agency involvement. James's conversation about school adjustment counselors, the preschool adjustment counselor has been involved in that. Those meetings and opportunities, it really is something that the adjustment counselors, as well as preschool staff, feel is very important. We know that we have a variety of families who have children at all grade levels. It's important for us to know what's going on, who's going on to which school. That inter-school collaboration is really important. Then also to make sure that we're, we re-establish our inter-agency involvement. That includes with Pathways, which we have a long, strong history with, as well as with KPN, early intervention, Wellspring, Open Door. Those are really important connections that help support our families and help support our staff. I will stop at that point. I think that's my last slide. And I guess any questions?
Questions?
I have to turn a light on. All of a sudden, it's getting dark.
No.
Sounds good.
I want to add something, which is, Emery was very kind in explaining that she hadn't done anything before, in the sense that I just sort of, not offhandedly, but just sort of, you know, talking to our principals and said, you know, we've got to work on school room plans, and this is how we're thinking about them, and what do you think? We had a conversation. And then a couple days later, Emery came to me and said, you know, preschool's never been asked to use before. And I was like, oh, okay. Not realizing that. And, but she's game, obviously, and I think you did a great job. And I think, you know, one thing in looking it over with Emery and talking, talking with her about it was just her objectives are so crystal clear. They are so, so the right ones. And that's, you know, in terms of the student growth and achievement and learning and really focused there. But then also the growth of the practitioners and the teachers and staff, and how they work together to get better. And then obviously, social emotional learning. And I think, you know, what's nice is the district is out of place, and that's because of work that's, you know, has been on, going for a while, where you see a lot of consistency in what folks are trying to do. Really dig down on instruction and, and student achievement and do that in a way that's collaborative and database. Make sure folks are working together to get better. And then also a real sense of caring and concern about the social, emotional well-being of our students. That's a foundation for learning. This is your preschool and right through K-12 as well, so. I really appreciate that a lot. So thank you, Emery. Thank you for being game, as always, and for just playing along. Appreciate that a lot.
Samantha, you have a question?
Emery, I seem to remember at some other meeting, you elaborated nicely on sort of your thoughts around a full-day model. I can't seem to remember exactly what you said. Could you please speak to that, whether or not it's a goal of the preschool or what the barriers are?
Sure. So the complication regarding full-day classrooms, we would love to have children full day. We actually did, and we can't connect this year with a typical full day. We actually did have children in full day two days a week for our half-day sessions. There were pros and cons to that within the context of pandemic, but within the context of normal times. We would like, we do have one, we have three full-day substantially separate intensive special education classrooms. We do have one full-day integrated classroom. There are tremendous benefits to a full-day classroom. However, the challenge for us is that we are a special education program. So we really are required to make sure that we have the space for, to accommodate all of our children who come in with IEPs. So in order for us, so when we have a half-day session, that, so we have four teachers who teach half-day sessions, four days a week. So there, they have two classrooms a day for four days. If we were to make each of those a full-day classroom, we would need additional classrooms, because we would need to be able to accommodate all of the children with IEPs. For a little bit further clarification, the reason that those classrooms, because they're integrated, there are very specific ratios that we need to have in order to consider a classroom integrated. So there needs to be a certain percentage of children with IEPs, as well as a certain number, percentage of children who are developing typically for the age. So we can't, we can't just accommodate the children with IEPs. We need to assure in an integrated setting that there are adequate numbers of children who are peers for that classroom. So in essence, we just need more classrooms, so.
So when we're thinking about the purchase or not of the preschool building, this is something that really weighs into that consideration. You know, I'm, my, my kids go to school, preschool in Manchester, because it's where I live closer to Manchester. And there's a, there's a whole bunch of kids leaving some of the private preschools to go to the public preschool, because it's a full-day model. Now that they have enough space, because they, they're rebuilding. So it, you know, other districts are doing it, and, and I think some are preferring to go to the public preschool, just because it's more conducive to working parents. And I think it's, yeah, that's the one sort of feedback that I've gotten from the community and my sort of group of friends about not being able to access the public preschools, because they just need more hours. So it's just something that I would like to keep sort of top of mind.
To pull you back on that, my children attend Broadport preschools, they go through, and there's other Gloucester students who come and it's similar reasons. So I would love to go to the Gloucester one, but, you know, I gotta have them, I gotta drop them off in the morning, pick them up in the afternoon, I can't, you know, do the half.
Thank you for reiterating that. I know that you had spoken about it before. I couldn't quite, quite remember everything that's happened in the last year. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Explain to me, we started the preschool because of, we had certain, we had to meet certain criteria.
It's a special ed program that we have to provide.
We have to provide the special ed, so. There are other places that do have full-time also.
I think the YMCA will.
Well, the YMCA is building one, but shouldn't we want to focus on what we have right now and make sure that these children excel? And make sure they have the best space and they have the best places and the curriculum and things they can use. And make sure they have the best space and they have the best places and the curriculum and things they can need to excel. Because if not, you're just gonna roll them over until they get, you know, get a guy in first grade. We want to make sure that we have a preschool, what was set up for. Not, no, not convenience because, uh, I'm sorry, not to be rude, but not a convenience of an all-day thing because there's the why, there's other preschools, there's other, there's head start programs, there's a lot of programs. And like you said, there's Rockport, there's Manchester and stuff. We have to fill a criteria. In order for us to fill that criteria, I want to make sure we get the best for those children.
But we might not be meeting a lot of kids' needs because parents can't access that program. So there might be a lot of kids that could benefit from.
Don't they do, don't, don't they do pre-testing? The children who go to that, don't you say, okay, I'm going to a little school, don't they have the pre-testing first?
Part of the program to have model students and that's where, so it's, right, so if, if there are students in Gloucester with needs and they get to the Gloucester preschool and there's a lack of peers that are not an IEPs, we're doing a disservice to those IEPs.
Well, isn't that why we tried to before, we wanted to integrate with head start or integrate with other children? And then we said, no, we had to meet a certain criteria. We couldn't do that. When I asked, why didn't we go to St. Anne's to put the preschool there? And we couldn't do that. And we're focusing on a building and not what was in the building. And that's why I just want to say, I mean, you know, we're focusing on, okay, so right away you're saying we need larger classes and that's why we need them because we need the others. So you're trying to tell me that at this half-day school, we're not having children that excel? It's just.
No, we are. And I think the challenge of getting enough peers was more, was a bigger issue when we were at Fuller.
Yes.
And when we started, when we moved and the facilities improved, I, it has not been, you know, the ratio's been good, right, Emery?
That. I, I agree, Kathy, that, that's right on point. You know, we do, surprisingly, we do fairly well with our peer-to-IEP student ratios because we're a well-regarded program. Um, and there are certain families out there that don't need, who have children who, who don't need specialized services, but do, are looking for a high-quality preschool program. Um, and they have the ability to just need, have, they just have a need for a partial-day program. Whether it's, there's a parent who doesn't work or for some families, they may have relatives who live in the area. We have lots of aunts and uncles, grandparents who pick kids up because they share in the childcare. So we do have that ability. But you know, the, it is sometimes a disadvantage for us not to have more full-day programming for those families where it might be a single.
Excuse me, but when we rented that building and you wanted to purchase that building, you didn't think for the future? We didn't think that we're gonna, we're gonna do full-day schools? That that was gonna be smaller?
I mean, I, what I, just, just a sort of, you know, a little look ahead is the committee has, has looked at this at other times. I'll bring back, you know, before the committee starting the summertime into the fall, what I hope will be a process and, and pathway towards deciding, you know, it's a for-all. Um, and, and what you, and the con- this conversation sort of, you know, you know, is um, preemptive of that really. Because whether it's full-day programming, number of classrooms needed, the the balance between or the need for peer students as well as an integrated program are all parts of that. So it's something, because we have, you renewed the lease for three years in the fall and that gives us now a runway into the purchase in a very real way.
But in terms of the preschool staff, they've been clear, jeez, the whole time I've been on the committee, every time the, the lease first purchase history comes up, is they say, we have some really good stuff going here, but we don't have enough room, which is why the, the purchase idea is always kind of involves kicking out the admin, taking over their space to try and, you know, bridge that. So this isn't a new thing. They've been clear.
That's what I want to say. You just said your children go to Rockport. She said hers goes to Manchester. So when they say, why are we building a new school? Because there's not enough kids. Actually, there are enough kids. They're just not going into our schools.
Well, preschool for twelve.
Well, preschool has to go to first grade, who has to go to second grade, who has to.
But then I've got to stay there.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that we're do, you are thinking ahead. We are planning ahead. We are saying that your children will eventually go to, will go.
My, mine certainly will, but yeah, but I don't know the same for other families. Might fall in love with the Manchester district or fall in love with the Rockport district and then, then you.
Yeah, full choice. Exactly. But that's what I'm saying is that we need, because I've been six years, we're working on this and prior. I just want to make sure that, you know what, we purchased things, or we're saying things that, you know what, we're planning and that we did look at O'Malley School. We did look at the other schools, if we could fix the school. So Samantha will know and Laura will know. We checked because we were saying that, why didn't you go to the O'Malley School? Well, we checked underneath there, we checked all that. Why didn't we go to the high school? Remember, we used to have preschool there? Um, I want people who are coming in for the first time, listening to a school committee. So when this comes forward is, okay, now you're buying a school, the church is expanding it. You know, I don't, why aren't you thinking? Why aren't you then, why aren't you, you know, making the school that you are bigger and put something there? I want everyone to know. Because the fact is, everyone wants transparency and everyone wants us to go forward and talk about it. We have been talking about this and we have looked at it. I, I'm sorry, Emery, if Ben put you on the spot to do that presentation again, because I heard from you when you came to my office of why we're doing the things we're doing. And we actually talked to the YMCA about their preschool and Kathy was on it. I just want people to understand that, yes, we've been thinking about it. Yes, you know, our children, those children will actually go to the, the schools that we're building and the schools that we need, et cetera. And I'm glad that you said, you know, you live closer to Manchester, you have a Rockport, but yes, they'll go in school. We want to bring them in. We want to make the best possible schools for our children at the preschool. That's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else on the preschool? Do we need a motion to accept the, the, uh, school improvement plan for the preschool?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Great job, Emery.
Yes, thank you.
Especially on the spot twice.
Just for the record, I, Emery had plenty of time to do this. Surprise her with it, which, they had plenty of time to work on it, right, Emery? There wasn't any pressure on that, right?
I wish we'd heard that before we did. It was evaluations two weeks ago. I really want to know.
We'll call vote, Maria.
Thank you, Emery.
Yes.
Yes.
Vote, vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Emery, and, and good luck moving forward.
So if you were things, uh, Maria, uh, if I could present, if I could. I am there looking at participants. Do you have participants?
Oh, yes. Canals.
I would be paid for a bigger preschool.
There's no reimbursement.
Yeah, there's nothing.
So, right, but the trick is lobby the state to mandate pre-K through 12. And then it must be able to cover half the cost of adding a level and then the next one gets to preschool.
Absolutely.
There you go. Thanks, Tim. Welcome.
Ten years from now, we're still having the same.
There, there's so many ways to go here. So, uh, I've mentioned to you a variety of time about the work we're doing on, it's reflecting on the school year. And so I'm just sharing with you, just an update, just a flavor of some of the spot, some of the results we're getting from our staff survey. We also did a parent survey, which I'll, which I'll just preview for you. But again, just, just a preview, just a flavor. So, um, uh, these are questions we asked to ask, um, you know, there were, there were school-based surveys, but they, we asked these series of questions across all, all the schools. Uh, and then some of the schools added a few questions, a question or two, or, or in case the high school. So, um, the first one is really one of the positive aspects from this year that we should incorporate. Uh, next one is, um, you know, in terms of, uh, what are things that, um, we should perhaps, uh, you know, uh, let, let go of, might not bring back. Because of the work this year, that you see as an alternative or it could be different. Number three is about, uh, what are the things you learned or did differently this year? Skills, techniques, techniques, knowledge that you want to use more going forward. Or work well with students, what are you thankful for, what are you most proud of? So I'm just going to go over a few of these and just give you a taste of the, of the dozen and dozen of responses, first ones that we got. But just for note, I'm just jumping to number two here, which was about, um, you know, the school year really required us to focus on what's essential. And then what do folks let go of, that you may not, may not bring back, uh, because you discovered an alternative or found that uh, something that you before wasn't beneficial, as you thought it once was. So I'll just highlight a few. Uh, nice to have many, it's not as many interruptions. The sense of focus really we see again and again in the responses, the conversations and, um, it's our staff meetings that people have shared with me, but also in the surveys as well. Um, I love that, I love that the second one here, I stuck to the meat of the sandwich, if you will. Um, but then also, um, then go, going a little bit deeper, you know, citing the data, targeted certain areas and then really was real for students. You've heard that again and again tonight as a real, you know, culture and approach we have. I think going down the, uh, just, uh, this is, uh, I think thought, thought provoking, um, there's no homework. So folks did all last homework this year, uh, because of the situation for lots, lots of reasons. And this person in particular is thinking about the equity of that and how it's more equitable in many ways not to have homework because you're not an advantaged student who has good supports at home. By counting so much homework. So it's not a, it's just a thought at this point. And I thought of, of a broken one. And then I think the last one there is just the, in terms of looking and thinking which projects are most essential. But I think the last part of this comment is, is, is why I pulled out was just, which is the projects we make more meaningful in realized situations. And again, you're hearing that in terms of being responsive and engaging as, um, both Emery and James talked about tonight is, is thinking through one of those things that are, you know, most meaningful to students and most applicable to realized situations. And number three, um, I just love this first one about time management. You know, you learn quickly to utilize every minute. And, um, and this teacher, I was thinking, was learning about streamlining transitions and limiting waste of time. You know, uh, most school days are short, ours, of course, is short. And, and you know, if we can take the focus and the streamline that we did this year and continue that same ethic, that same urgency, then it'll help our students quite a bit. Just going, moving down here about technology is I, 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 I pulled this one out because I thought it was really instrumental, a really, um, important thinking of technology. And this one is about specifically about reading and what is possible with kids and learning reading because of technology. So they can hear themselves, um, and then the teacher can check, check for confidence and fluency in a variety of ways through the, through those recordings or watching it live and going back to those things. So it wasn't sort of a, it was sort of a little bit of a twist on how technology is helping not only kids in the reading, but also the assessment of reading. And then another thing you keep on hearing again and again about is the schedule. Is how can schedules may be different and may, what can we learn from this year that can apply, um, in, in, in future years? And one area we've heard from elementary schools is the focus on academics in the morning. Okay. We've also heard quite a bit about, um, really getting, uh, non-essential meetings, interruptions, uh, from the school day. And then this example was just how to organize this specialist schedule. So in this example, the spec- specialist was working with a specific grade for two weeks at a time. And that level of, um, sort of, um, uh, just focus and duration and, um, instead of ones every week. You know, it was, uh, something to make a lot of progress, might have been for two weeks at a time, but it was one grade and so that, that could be that class every single day. So just, um, again, some things we're learning. But we'll be analyzing things more as we go through the summer and in the next school year and continue to learn those lessons. And then just want to folks to crowd up and, you know, just to talk about such a case of students and all the work that they did and challenges, um, that some of their students overcame. The idea that vocational students were in early as you folks pushed for and we were able to do. And just really, um, this teacher, um, we're proud that they, that those students, uh, our vocational students were real uh, standard, standard bearers. And then there are also personal reflections, uh, a teacher being proud about learning to ask for help and accepting limitations. And then another, another one, just proud that, that he or she made it through considering all, everything else that's going on in their family lives. And so, anyway, it's just a flavor for what we're learning and what we're, we're pulling out. But, um, there's a lot of lessons to learn, but it'll take much deeper analysis. Then not only learning from where there are patterns, but also some of the outliers too. You know, sometimes you can, uh, you know, a road jam, it can be in, in, in a comment or a thought, which a few people had. So we'll continue with that analysis. And then the family survey, this was, um, put out early June, again by each school, posed some, these common questions similar to what we asked, you know, what did, which we keep on doing from this year, which we never do again. What do you hope, uh, we can do next year to make new persons do better? And then questions about funding. And the last question is important. It's one of the first steps we've taken more broadly about the idea of additional funding and getting input, um, from the community around where that can be, uh, where, where that can be put forward. So I just want to highlight that last question just for you to see the options we put in for people to respond. And we also added an open response, other as well. So again, we're, we're getting started through this data yet, but it's one of the first steps we're taking in terms of, you know, broader outreach to the community about how to focus on the additional dollars we have for.
And when will we see the responses? Timeline for that? Not rushing you, just asking, like, fall or sooner?
August, fall, sort of thing. Just, I, I don't want to pile up too much on that.
No, I get it.
August meetings, okay. Yeah, over time we get, we get to it. And then, and you'll, you'll be involved in, I mean, you'll, you'll get these responses.
Okay.
But then you'll also, of course, be involved, they'll be approved. Especially as for three, you know, due in October, so. Let me just give you a quick, uh, update on my entry plan, which leading into the long-term shooting plan. So really, I'll be reporting my entry findings, um, to you in August that typically would happen probably, you know, mid, mid, um, fall last year, that wasn't for this pandemic we had. Um, and then my entry findings will be sort of the first step on lead into, uh, shooting grant process, which, um, I expect we'll have complete. And, uh, and you'll be involved in, in looking iterations and giving feedback. And that'll be, um, a much, you know, a more broad-based, um, you know, process. Just quickly on my entry findings and what you, what you expect is really the purpose of that is that it gives me an opportunity to report out to you everything I've learned this year from, you know, first just being here and doing all the work, but also listening to folks. Everything from conversations I had with all of you last summer to the conversation I had with, um, high school, high school students this spring. I've also looking at documents and a little significant document review, but really helping sort of sharing my impressions of where things, I think things are. That includes, um, giving you identification of, my identification of what I think our areas of strength are and areas, areas of improvement. I will review documents and data. You know, continue to do that and doing it all year long, obviously. But that'll come forward and then I'll also include a draft process for launching and then, um, completing the shooting plan. So, so you'll expect this, these findings in the August meeting. And then, just so you know, as here, the data analysis will include, not limited to these examples of things we're looking at. I'm looking at your setting, but those, that's the examples of the doctor review. Things. It's pretty broad-based. It's, um, I've been looking already, but we'll, you know, really can take the time now to think what you think. A bunch of these. So questions about process on that or what to expect? Want to move on to just a couple of, um, uh, one facilities thing, which is the G O G S and O M A, like entry upgrades, entry upgrades. You know, you keep the old entryway, not the new one, you've got a chain of defense around it. But just to give you an update, so as you, to remind you, this is about rebuilding, improving sightlines, flow and really control at both schools, the two steps, two-step entry process where you come in to what they call well, they call it a human trap, so I can.
It's a, it's a man trap. That's not how you say.
Vastibule.
Right. Um, but vestibule, yeah, but it's, it's a vestibule where you cannot proceed past the second entryway without having, uh, approval and permission and someone identifying who exactly you are, whether, what your business is here. Okay? And that's, that's an important piece. It's what we have in West Parish, so we'll have it, uh, East Gloucester veterans and we're, and you have all been, you know, doing the work so that we can, um, do it, uh, make the changes this, construct it this summer. And that includes reinforced and improved structures and glazing. I'm not a very person that's showing you where those things are. But if you want to ask me about it, you can just stand in my office. I can go over the plans with you. But, um, that's underway, uh, at both places right now. The technologies are moved, the offices are being moved. O'Malley has already been moved, I, I believe, and they're, they're beginning now. Um, and then, uh, high school, um, because that had a, um, more intense completion of the year is moving this, is moving now. And, uh, that includes James' office, which is quite an endeavor. But, um, so that, that's underway and, um, at this point on schedule. Um, and we expect it to stay on schedule, but we've been meeting, uh, weekly with the project team, James, myself, Lynn, Grant Harris, and our real product manager, DPW, our text and structural manager. They are, uh, going and will go very, very fast. The obvious schedule here. We're on June 22nd, staff moving out of those split spaces. And then you see June 22nd to August 18th, which is after a long time, this construction, um, folks move back in week of August 19th and ready to go August 26th, so. So, um, at this point, no reason to believe, uh, that will change, uh, but if it does, we'll know about it. Yeah, I think that's, that's all for my updates and presentations.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, we'll move on to committee, uh, reports and we'll start with, uh, building and finance. And, um, there'll be a number or actually, um, a couple of, um, motions coming out of, out of building and finance, so.
Would you like me to do those along with?
Do, yeah, just do them along with the, so, uh, Gary, Gary's here for, when you get to the budget, I guess, too.
Okay. Um, okay, so from, uh, general things, we went over a list of summer cleaning and maintenance and repair work. Um, then just went through the, um, biggest items, which are the security projects. Um, there's a lot of exterior painting on the schedule, paving, um, at many of the schools for repairs. There's a lot of, uh, regular work that I think people don't know the D P W does over the summer, but they do a lot of things. Take advantage of not having kids in the schools, um, so that's going on. Um, we finished the year, um, you know, well within budget because we simply couldn't find temporary, you know. Substitutes and things like that, so there were a lot of favorable things, um, we got to, um, got around to purchasing some furniture that's been on the back burner. And not possible for quite a long time in terms of having money to purchase some upgrades of furniture. Um, so those have been purchased. We, um, so anyway, so we ended up the year and we have a prepaid going to special education in the amount of one million, two fifty. So that gives us some flexibility going forward, but also that safety net for, um, you know, an expense that can really get out of here quickly. Depending upon, um, changes in student body. We also have food service that this year was in a, um, tough spot financially that, um, in terms of revenue versus the costs associated with delivering the food. Um, so hopefully some of that will shake out this coming year, um, as more of the schools will be in person. So there'll be more kids participating in lunch this year. The high school was probably the, um, lowest participation just because of their schedule, um, leaving at ten thirty in the morning. The next group will come in at eleven fifteen, so there's really not a lot of, you know, swinging by the cafeteria to bring lunch home or to go there and have lunch ahead of time. Um, so those are kind of the general items that we discussed. Um, Gary, you want to take us through the, um, uh, latest and final rendition of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget?
Uh, yes, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'd be happy to, and, and just to remind everybody, this is the last step in the budget process. Um, we'll go over the, some of the budget changes, very minor budget changes. The grand total, the budget did not change. Um, so the, the total again, forty-five million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight ninety-seven. That has been consistent all the way through the process. Just some, uh, uh, budgets have changed either, uh, higher or lower. But in the end result, it has balanced out to the total budget as I just reported. We do have, uh, budget changes, uh, slide is, can that be shown? Yes, thank you. Um, if you can, uh, increase or increase that so we can visually see.
Uh, trying, hold on.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll move around, you, you narrate and I'll move as a people.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, the first change, if you go back to the right, uh, the other way.
Other right?
Yeah. Uh, okay, so there was a salary adjustment, um, for the, uh, transportation mechanic. Um, that was, uh, we had budgeted a full-time mechanic and we ended up hiring a part-time mechanic. Uh, that had retired from another school district. And we believe with his experience that, uh, he'll be able to service our, uh, fleet. Um, if not, well, then we'll go back and, uh, try again for a full-time mechanic. But we're going to try with the part-time mechanic and that actually saves us, uh, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, the next item is, um, some teacher retirements and resignations. Some of those teachers were earning salaries towards the top of the salary schedule. And will be replaced, uh, with salaries averaging towards the bottom of the salary schedule. So we're estimating about fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars of, uh, savings there. Uh, we did have a change in the curriculum instruction coordinator, that position was upgraded. Um, at first we were thinking to fill that internally, but, uh, we opted for ex- externally, uh, candidate. That turned out to be really what, uh, the administration was looking for. So there was a change, uh, of forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars to, uh, increase. And then there was, um, the, uh, more significant changes were, were in special education. We, uh, increased the out of district tuition placeholders, uh, to seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Um, that change was two hundred and eighty thousand and change. Uh, that will allow us to, uh, if, if, if there are additional out of district students. And along with additional out of district students are out of district transportation. And as well as, uh, if there are any increased contractual, uh, services for personnel that is needed. Uh, that all can be, uh, um, be, uh, increased from this, uh, placeholder of seven hundred and five thousand dollars. So there is some, uh, flexibility in the budget for, um, additional expenses in special education. Uh, new positions, uh, for, uh, in replacements and, and the updated contract settlement. Uh, for the paraprofessionals that added a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to the budget. And offset, uh, was prepaid tuition from F Y twenty-one. Uh, that increased to, um, as Kathy had indicated, a million, two hundred and fifty thousand. So that's, uh, embedded in the budget that provided, uh, savings of four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, altogether, the special education department decreased by forty-one thousand, five twenty-three. So those were the major changes, uh, that, again, the total is forty-five million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, this was a challenging year, F Y twenty-one. And, uh, we were able to have some additional savings that we, uh, that we utilized in the F Y twenty-two budget. Again, the savings amounted to, uh, substitutes that we tried to hire, uh, some paraprofessional positions. Uh, school bus monitors and some other positions that teachers, uh, filled the remote academy. But their original positions were not backfilled, uh, because of, um, the students moved to the remote academy. So there wasn't as much need for the teacher, teacher positions, uh, in the regular school. So when you add all that up, uh, that, uh, pretty much explained F Y twenty-one. And how F Y twenty-one, uh, was used to, uh, uh, be included in the F Y twenty-two budget. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have, uh, at this, at this point.
Melissa.
Two questions, um, how much did you say the paraprofessional contractual agreement increased the budget for next year?
I didn't say that specifically, uh.
I thought you said it was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
That was a combination of things.
That was the combination of things.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Am I?
We've had to add a, a few such occasion, uh, positions just recently because of, um, I P meetings and, and also new students deserving, so that, that's, that's the bulk.
Okay, I thought I misunderstood and I was just trying to do the math in my head. Um, my second question is, um, I've been watching the meeting, the Zoom meetings after the fact for being up, trying to keep up with everything that's going on. But can you tell me what kind of, what if any social, emotional or Title One support is being provided at Plum Cove? Because I didn't hear or see anything and I know when Tammy Morgan was here, there was, uh, as principal. There was several requests coming from that school to put in support. And I'm just wondering if that school is on the radar, radar for any support going forward.
I mean, uh, there's, there's an adjustment counselor there, you know, um, you know, a psychologist and, and so that.
Full-time or is it shared?
No, it's full-time, yeah, full-time.
Okay.
Um, so, um, you know, uh, whether or not they have specific, you know, programs or needs, and, you know, you know, I don't, I don't. I can, I can speak to it mainly and, 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 and G H S, um, I, I can't in Plum Cove, but, but they had the same level of staffing, um, uh, as the other large school.
Okay, cause last I heard that they were sharing and I just want to make sure we weren't at that level still.
We added that last year or before, more recently, not, not originally when it was requested.
Right, I just remember going a couple of years without being able to do it and I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of that, but evidently it's been taken care of, so that's great.
You, you took care of it, I, I, it was in some place before I got here.
Okay, I don't remember doing that.
Uh, any other questions on the, on the budget? Then we need a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two operating budget in the amount of forty-five million dollars, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven. So I presented.
Okay, and we have a, a motion or a second, any discussion?
I do.
Seeing none, um, could we have a roll call vote, ma'am?
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
New taken.
Present.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Anthony Lancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Z.
Yes.
Can I just say a huge shout out to the mayor's office and the city council for the budget process this year? It was just really good, I didn't feel like it was a struggle, I just felt very well supported by the administration and the city council. And it was just a good, good process considering everything this community has gone through.
Okay, the motion carries, uh, six in favor and one present.
Okay, um, and the last, uh, item on the, um, building finance agenda was, um, a discussion and a, uh, motion on the modular units at Beeman and Plum Cove School. Um, as, uh, we've talked about numerous times and Mike Hale has continued to come to us regularly over the years I've been on the committee. Um, those modulators are really at the end of their useful life. Um, and it's now time to address them, um, speaking to kind of the good working relationship with city, John Dunn has been in conversations, Mike Hale. Um, so this is the first, um, real sign of hope that these modulators, which I looked through some of the history and. I remember there was, there was a public hearing on our schools and it was the first time I met, saw you, cause you came and talked about Beeman. And what are we doing to address Beeman because of all those things? So, um, so we met again today to come up with, um, wording for a motion, so I will make a motion on this and you can ask questions. Okay, um, so I move that we, at the school committee recommends, oh, that, yeah. That the school committee submits a request to the city administration and the city administration and school department work together expeditiously to develop the most cost-effective approach to repairing or replacing the modulators, which are at the end of their useful life.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion.
Just, the motion didn't specify which schools, does it need to?
Oh, uh.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we added that Beeman and Plum Cove.
Sorry, I think, yeah, add that Beeman and Plum Cove. So, and I'll just give some detail, there's, there's fifteen modulators, um, between the two schools, um, so that's. And, uh, Beeman, I think has nine, which is quite a significant.
Nine and six.
Portion of their, let me get them, two thousand, two thousand one?
Eight.
Two thousand eight.
I go on the committee in two thousand eight, we were discussing getting them, so I think they actually came out two thousand nine.
And at Beeman, I think when, when we did West Parish, um, uh, there were some added.
Right, we added more.
Two more were added.
And there was one already at East Gloucester where I came on.
Yeah.
Half Plum Cove is modulators.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
No, that school can be expanded and that school is strong and that school has a lot of possibilities. And when they planned Plum Cove, they actually did a, a, a layout where you could expand because of the furnace and everything else, they did that.
Yeah.
And modulators don't last and I think they're on their last repairs.
They are.
Yeah.
We're trying to keep them together, this, this summer in particular, actually.
I can actually say, over the past couple of days, I've been reading through minutes and going back even, I think the first one I found was in two thousand, October night, two thousand fifteen. When, um, they discussed the modular conditions is when Mike Hale started talking about getting us to come to a plan. Cause the intention when we got the modules originally is that they weren't going to last more than ten years. I believe they were used when we got them, some were.
Some of the O eight batch were lightly used.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Joel.
Um, so, you know, the, the, the wording of this motion is broad and I spoke about it to be enough, I just want to speak about it here. Um, the full committee, I was just really encouraged, some really dynamic thinking about, cause these modulators, you know, no, no, uh, secret here. I don't like the modulators, they last ten to fifteen years, they take the city twenty years to pay for, we do a twenty-year bond on them. Which means, well, you know, these, these current ones will be off-site for five years and we'll still be, you know, writing a check every year to pay for the ones that we've already thrown in the trash. But we have new ones doing the same thing, right? So I, I don't like them, um, and so I'm, I would really hope that we have, we avoid taking on more new ones than we need to. Um, and I appreciate that that requires, you know, taking a hard look, I, I hope it, and, you know, I'm looking at the E G vets coming online fall of twenty twenty-three. As that's a, it's a big enough disruption in our district that there is, you know, room for, you know. The, to look at redistricting and reconfiguring the way in which we have things set up. I know that is tough, but I want to remind this committee, you know, two things, one, this is, this is no surprise, right? We knew these things when coming down the bike. And two, this committee in this district has a history of being able to pull off, you know. In the, in the nineties, we changed, uh, junior high school into a middle school, a decade later, we changed it into an innovation school. Two thousand eight, we redistricted seven hundred plus students, five fifty out of Fuller, plus all the fifth graders. You know, in twenty twenty, we just reinvented school period from K to twelve with, you know, as of tonight, you know, great academic results, right? And so I don't think it's, you know, beyond the capabilities of the committee or the district to just look at this. And it, it might not be, the answer might be, you know what, we've got it dialed in and that's the way we need to stay. But I just think it's unfair to the district, unfair to the taxpayers if we don't look at, you know. And if, and if, you know, so, and off the top of my head, I'd written, wrote this down earlier tonight, you know, it's like, what, what, what am I even talking about? I'm not saying these are like the, the right answers or whatever, um, but like having conversations where, okay, well. You know, things the way they are now are not the way they always were, as people get worried about change. But when I, we, as a rebuilding West Parish, I used to speak to, um, Val Gilman, who I think was, was chair at the time. We used to say, you know, I don't understand how we're taking a school that had three hundred and thirty kids and we're building a school for three twenty-five. And she'd say, well, Joel, three twenty-five is just the M S B A number, if you add three kids per class, you know, one through five, there's another forty-five kids you can put in there, right? And that same math would apply to E G vets, cause E G vets is, is a four forty, you can get another sixty kids if you add, you know, three more children per class, right? It's a hundred and five students taken off the tail right there that you can pull out of Beeman and Plum Cove. If you redistricted them into these two new schools we have that were built with a, you know, as, as was told to me repeatedly, the wink and a nod saying, okay, it's a three twenty-five. But really we can get, you know, much more in here, right? This E G vets coming online would be the time and if a hundred and five students or even eighty students or whatever are pulled out of Beeman. This EG vets coming online would be the time, and if a hundred and five students or even eighty students or whatever are pulled out of Beeman and Plum Cove, what does that do for the need for modulators? Because as you remember, Plum Cove, you know, well, Plum Cove was closed at one point entirely and at another point it was K one. It was the K one factory for Beeman and then in second grade went down to Beeman. And that functioned and, you know, was okay and all that would seem like a change today would also just be a reversion to the way those schools used to function, right? Um, and again, you know, I'm not saying this is the right answer now, but just thinking, um.
Thinking a lot of that.
Right, right. Again, I always bring up how much space there is at O'Malley, right? There are districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that do elementary school K four and middle school five through eight. And we know O'Malley has room to hold another two hundred students because it held another three hundred plus students not too long ago. And you go, okay, that's, that's a little nervous and you go, well, look at the Fuller fifth. We, for one year, we had, every fifth grade was in their own, you know, they're all at Fuller for one year and that class tracked through O'Malley and tracked through high school with excellent attendance, excellent standard test scores, excellent honor, excellent honor roll, um, participation. And even, you know, the valedictorian that year when they graduated stood up and was like, you know, the, the Fuller fifth really galvanized this as a class, it's where we came together a year early. So maybe there's wisdom in that, right? Of, of getting the classes together in fifth grade. So these kind of things, I don't know which, if any of the things I said tonight are actually the answer, but EG vets coming online is a big enough disruption where you're not redistricting for redistricting's sake. And if that allows us to save, you know, significant money for the city by not replacing, you know, if you go, oh, we need Plum Cove back to K one and we don't need any more modulators at Plum Cove again, it goes, it goes right back to the way Plum Cove used to function as the main building, K one. You're saving the city a ton of money and we're not doing anything outrageous and stuff we've done before. So I just want to put that out there. I really hope, you know, this, this doesn't need to, they're not being replaced this summer. I know we're, we're recovering from this pandemic, but there is time still, although it's shrinking, to really think out, you know, what makes sense? And do we need to actually purchase another fifteen modulators or even another twelve modulators? You know, is, is there a scenario in which we get another four modules and go, hey, guys, this will carry us through and so we do, you know, the, the Beeman Plum Cove rebuild? And if there isn't, there isn't, but I just think we owe it to everybody to, you know, students, taxpayers, teachers alike, to really think hard about this before we just do the, the easier path of saying, we've got the same modulators, we're going to need closest modulators going forward. And so I just.
Why don't we have an assessment? Why don't we, that, that's not a bad idea.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The most, the most, the motion is, is to make, to request the replacement, you know, the, it, it, the motion is the motion and, and, and we're, we're expanding this greatly, um, you know, and, um, so.
Well, she's, she put it on for discussion.
Well, it's up to the, for the motion.
Discussion.
The motion's up to discussion.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'm supporting the motion. It's supporting the motion because I think there's room to do die within this motion.
That's exactly, but you mean, have, we've done, uh, we're studying on the other ones, we've done a study on down below O'Malley. Um, I was at Fuller sixth and seventh. I mean, we did do a lot of changes here and there, but you know what? If you, if we just brush off any ideas, then you know what, we're not giving everyone a voice. And that's what they keep saying. I, that's not the wrong, look at the modules, look at the cost, and exactly, I'm going to tell you something right now. Anyone that's going to order anything right now is going to take two years to get here. So you have to do discussion. Yeah. It'll take two years to get here.
I want to be very clear in this motion because I asked this question earlier at BNF. This motion is only about the conditions of the modulators. This motion has nothing to do with the edu- educational plan going forward. And with all due respect to everything that Joel has said, from someone who's been on this committee from two thousand and eight, you're going backwards, we're going forward. We had the discussions about Plum Cove being grade one through two or, or one through four. We've moved on from that and realized that wasn't the plan that was best, the best interest for the kids. You keep saying we have tons of rooms in our school to add on and I don't know that that's the case. One good reason for that is because class sizes are smaller, class sizes are governed by the teacher's contract. Years ago, like I was telling Kathy earlier, when I was in school, there was thirty-five kids in a class. Now there's twenty. So yes, there might be more room in the classrooms itself, but we're still using the same amount of classrooms. It's not like we have empty classrooms and your comment about tons of room in the school is very misleading to the public as if we do have empty classrooms to move kids from Plum Cove to the high school or, or whatever else you were talking at the BNF meeting last week. That is not the case. We have smaller classrooms for a reason, class size. And I don't want to deviate away from that. I don't want to go backwards. I don't want to change Plum Cove. We have been discussing this plan for many, many years and you come on and talk to us like we've never had these discussions before. They're in the minutes. I just went through a couple hours of minutes tonight to show how much conversation and how much public input we have had through public hearings at every single elementary school to get to where we are today. And your comments to me are regressive. You know, we're going forward. There's different codes that we, that we have to comply with now. If MSBA's codes say that we're going to have so many kids in a class, that in consideration with our teacher's contract that dictates class size and what we think is best, does not lead me to say I want to squeeze eight more kids into a classroom because that's not where I'm going. And I don't want this modular conversation to turn into that. If you want to ask the committee to reflect back on how we got to where we are today and are we still on the right path in, in our consolidation plans going forward, that's one thing. But don't come on here and talk to us like the work's never been done because it has through many different superintendents from Christopher Farmer to, to Conley, through Dr. Sapphire and now through Phil, Ben Lemus. We've had these conversations. This is not new. So I just want to be clear, my approval, because I'm going to support this motion, is based on the fact that the modulators are in very bad shape. Some modulators aren't even going to make it till next year as far, without needing repair. It's been discussed that it might be a good idea to, instead of buying a new modular, replace them or fix them with stick build because stick build work lasts longer than modular does. So this motion is here before us to find the most cost-effective, which we usually always do on this committee, the most cost-effective plan to the taxpayers to either fix or replace the modulators. We're not redistricting because of the modulators, we're not changing the way we're doing education because of the modulators. It's a discussion about the, the amount of space we need right now and how do we fix it and keep it safe for the next probably fifteen years before we even think of having another school being built, knowing the timeline we've had over the past couple of years to get the two that we've had. So.
That's what I need to hear.
It's crazy. I mean.
Spending money.
We're not spending extra money. We're fixing it.
Exactly. Schools, because you know what, that's what people are hearing and that's why they're getting angry. They're going, you haven't even finished one, you're working, someone said it, but we're going to merge Plum Cove and Beeman and then I hear everyone, now we're having all these discussions.
If we buy no modulators, Plum Cove and Beeman probably isn't going to be built before their life expect, expectancy leaves because that's not anytime soon. People think it's eight to ten years. It's like, you kidding me? I just want to make myself clear because I don't want any of this conversation to lead the public to believe that we're now going to start talking about redistricting in the city of Gloucester. Because in my opinion, that is the last conversation I'm going to have based on the past fifteen years of conversations I've had with this committee.
Well, I thank you for that. I thank you for answering it. He has a right to ask and we answer. We, we did okay and that's all I.
I'm not asking her permission for anything. She's supporting it for one reason, I'm supporting it for another reason. We're all supporting the motion. Right, that's all it is.
Okay.
But it's about modulators, not redistricting. I don't want to put a messy message out there.
Okay.
Okay, it's not my complaint, man. I just want to also point out that the intent, that, that I'm supporting this clearly so that our kids have safe places to learn. And also with the acknowledgement that I know that Beeman and Plum Cove are actually undersized the way they are. So I'm not letting this motion be right-size the schools because that's a big conversation about art rooms and it's about special education rooms and it's about a lot of wishless things. That's not what this is about.
Thank you.
About making sure the structures we have are safe or replaced.
Well, I want to make sure that before, do you know how much each modular costs? And you said we need twenty, fifteen, whatever. Just want to make sure that we know that they do last fifteen years. For the next fifteen years, Plum Cove will stay Plum Cove and Beeman is going to stay Beeman. Because we cannot keep saying we're going to do the modules and then next thing you know, five years, say we're tearing it down or we're not going to do that in effort. That's all people want to hear. They want to hear that their children, fine, let's invest in our schools, absolutely. Let's repair, but I'm wanting you on now, we better talk about this sooner, get Mike in here because I hear that to order things, I delayed one to two years.
That's why the expeditiously is in the motion. So that we, if we could get it about. That would be best for everybody involved.
Let, let's get that going. That's discussion with the kids.
We need to vote so that we can get it going.
I thought we already voted on the motion. That's why we're discussing.
No.
We didn't do a roll call?
We haven't voted yet, no. We're, we're in discussion.
Okay.
Laura, you have anything to say?
As someone whose child was learning in those modulators, um, they need to be replaced or fixed or improved in some way. I will say that as a new member of this committee, I appreciate both Joel's, um, interest in thinking outside the box. I really do. And thinking about solutions that are cost-effective and intelligent for the long term. And I appreciate Melissa giving us some history on how we got here. And so I support this motion to investigate this expeditiously to find the most cost-effective way moving forward.
Okay, this is about the health and safety of students. Um, it's not about changing how we deliver education.
Yes.
But again, is, is requesting the city to expend funds to achieve that goal? And I just think it's unfair to, to everybody to not, you know, be, to at least take a creative look at it before we say, extend these funds because this is the only way you can do this, is buying all these modulators again, is to say.
Is buy or repair? It's not just buy?
Sure.
Sure.
But before we say, hey, city, money, please, buy us more of these things, we, I mean, or to everybody to say, you know, we truly need all these, because X, Y, Z, we've looked at every other option.
Can we move the vote, please?
Yeah, let's.
We've got to discuss things, right? My, my goodness.
It's not, that's not what this, this vote is about. This is about modulators. We need modulators. They fall apart. The one in Beeman is going to have the wall fall out before the fall.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So this is just to do the research and then the costs will then come to us again, correct?
No. No, no, what, this is to come up with a, a, a solid plan.
Right, but then you said the, the cost of it would have to come to the school committee.
No, no, the cost is, the cost, the, what, the.
Cost comes to the.
The plan has to come to the school committee, not the cost. The plan has to come back to the school committee. That's law, that's state law.
And we have to vote on that.
Basically just says we have to approve it. We have to approve any alterations or changes to school buildings.
So when that plan comes forward, it would be helpful if, to sort of support everybody's needs and thoughts around this, that there is some evidence that lots of different things were considered to make sure that this is the most cost-effective.
I personally am not, this motion to me and this issue is not about changing our class configuration, our school configuration or, or, or separating our school communities. It's about literally solving building issues at Beeman and Plum Cove.
So, but if it's to find the most cost-effective way, how will we know that, that this is the most cost-effective way?
Because there's, because there's going to work of whether it's.
It'd be a question of weighing repair to purchase new. It would be a question of, 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 do we need, you know?
As part of the plan, so that we know that's.
Last time Mike talked to us, let's, let's be honest, he said it, he's repaired and repaired.
He's been saying it since two thousand sixteen.
Exactly. We need to, we, we need to look at we, whether they're refurbished ones, brand new, whatever, they, we need to discuss that. Ben needs to work with Mike. They need to look at everything that has to be, my concern is if we're going to spend all this money, okay? I want to reassure the public that this where their kids are going. Plum Cove parents asked me, people asked me, they told me, you know, we keep hearing merger, we're not building a new school, we're looking at what we have. We repaired, we're doing East Gloucester, we did West Gloucester, we did Central, we're going to do Central. Now it's Beeman and Plum Cove just to make sure that they have repairs. Sustainability in their classrooms and what they need in modular. Maybe the modular might be bigger so you can have what you need to do. We don't know. But the fact is they need sustainability in their buildings. It's not fair if they're going to sit in school and have a tick, tick, because it's leaky.
I, I mean, I agree, but I think.
And he said his opinion and I just wanted to hear why they, because you know what? Um, I wasn't on the committee for the whole time. I was on a city council and what was presented, we voted on, like he said. We knew West Parish, you could put more. We said, why, if you have three, the same exact questions and they said, oh, you can add on and and it was justifiable and she answered it and that's fine. I just, as a city side.
Haven't done it.
Just as a city side, I need to know if we're going to do this because I, I don't want to spend money and ask taxpayers or whatever to say, we need another two hundred thousand dollars. And then we might need another two hundred thousand or whatever to expand and purchase or whatever. Because technically, if we would have purchased the Blackberry years ago, when you guys really wanted to really purchase it, really, it would have been better off because the mortgage would have been cheaper than, especially the interest rate today, would have been cheaper what we paid for it. But you know what, we learned, we move forward and that's all I want to do is just letting you know that we're not going to get them next summer. So we're going to have to do some repairs anyways. I'm going to have to budget that out with, you know, and thank God we have that in our budget to actually budget that out because we won't get them. So we really do need to have this conversation sort of.
And the modulars buy us ten to twelve years.
Which we need.
Which we need.
Yes.
If there is a long-term rebuild, um, you're going to, you're not going to, they're not going to go unused because it, just to even get it.
That's all I want.
And to open and all that.
It's ten to twelve years of use and twenty years of debt for the city. And we go to the budget and ask for other educational things and we can't fund it because we're running out of money because we're still paying debt on modulators that we threw in the trash four years ago. We're trying to get adjustment counselors, coaches, and we can't get that in the, the budget because debt service for buildings we threw away is still hitting the, the bottom line. And so.
I, I still.
Oh, I, I'm going to move, move the vote. I, 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 okay. Maria, could we have a roll call vote? Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
May I take it?
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Plancy.
Yes.
Yes.
It carries unanimously in spite of.
Ventilation needed, there you go, no money.
No, it's, it's, uh, I, I think, um, I, I wish I had the number in front of me, but I, I've been told the projected cost of this is not unfortunate, it's a, it's a modest expenditure.
Two million?
That's, that's what we have to work through.
Yeah.
Is in the repair costs, replacement costs, combination two, and that, that's what, you know, the city needs from us. For me and to, to need from, you know, Department of Department of General Assembly, myself, our team to put that on paper, to put it, you know, be very diligent about what those costs are and, and we'll show what other costs are as well, so people have a good picture.
Okay.
Of what, of what costs are, but, um, does, I, I want to interrupt the committee's discussion. You know, um, but let's, we'll put, put it on you so you have, you know, clear choices.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, that's essentially what I was asking for, right? Like this is just step one, right? And then the committee gets a more inde, more detailed plan of what to.
But wait, let's be clear, what is the plan? The plan is whether we're going to fix, repair or replace the modulators. We're not talking about looking into everything else. That's the plan.
It'd be ridiculous to consider all options.
We've already done it, Joel.
You have. I've been in the committee six years, Melissa.
Yeah.
All right.
Wait, wait, here's the minutes, right here. Actually, I printed the one off of, uh.
We want, um, to move on, um, to the naming subcommittee meeting of June seventeenth.
So, that would be me. Um, so on the name committee is myself, Joel and Kathy. And before I get to my notes, I want to read a, um, policy that we have because I don't know if everyone's familiar with it and I think it kind of will set the tone for the discussion going forward. So it's called naming new facilities. It's, uh, policy number FF. Naming a school is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. Personal prejudice or favorism, political pressure or temporary popularity should not be an influence in choosing a school name. A name with educational significance or inspiration should be chosen. The committee also feels that it is appropriate to name schools for physical locations, geographical areas, distinguished local, state and national leaders whose names will lend dignity and stature to the school or significant or pertinent events. The superintendent will prepare for the approval of the committee, a procedure to follow in recommending names for school buildings. Don't worry, there's going to be more to come. Um, whenever possible, whenever possible, the wishes of the community, including parents and students, should be considered in naming new facilities. One more paragraph. It is expected that an orderly, announced procedure will lessen the community or factual pressures so that, so quick buildup when the selection is delayed or seems uncertain. A prompt decision will reduce disappointments in advanced communities. A prompt decision will reduce disappointments and advance community solidarity. Much confusion in accounts, files, and records can be avoided if a new school can be identified by name before the planning starts. So that's the, the, um-
That's our policy.
Our policy, we didn't necessarily follow this, but I think we're on track with it to some extent. So I'm gonna get into, um, my notes a little bit, so I'm gonna talk about the who, what, where, and when, and then Joel and Kathy can also, um, chime in on the conversation. So we met on June 17th, which was last Thursday. Um, and we do feel like this is time sensitive, so I wanted to have this conversation tonight, because we're trying to get some feedback from the committee to make sure we're on the right path. Um, I can say it was a very robust, positive conversation, unlike the one we just had, it was all talking good, which was great. So the who is the school committee, so who is gonna do, uh, first, let me start by saying, the policy says that, um, the superintendent will, will start this process, however, we discussed the school committee doing it and not putting pressure on you, knowing you have so much on your plate, that, um, we felt it was a school committee project, um, and it was a school committee authority to pick the final name in the end, after we get through the process. So I know the, um, policy says you, but we're looking for feedback tonight to see if you wanna hand it off to us, if the committee agrees that that's what we should be doing, or join us. Just didn't wanna put the pressure to put extra work on you, but more than happy to have many people involved. So like I said, I'm talking about the school committee, we decided that we would take on the project and not put, um, extra pressure on the superintendent. We take the possession, we take the position that the final say of the name of the buildings, based on community feedback, is with the school committee, according to this, um, policy as well. Um, and that the school committee will act as a filter, was a word that Joel used, to get to a chosen name. The final decision is by school committee vote, based on ideas from the public, also. So the what is the naming of the school, have a, we're hoping to have a positive experience, open to the community with transparency, get as many suggestions and, as I, and ideas as possible in a grassroots-type manner. Not, um, we discussed, um, the possibility Joel brought up of having, um, a ballot question, that that could be one of the options. Um, we also discussed that it would be too late to get on the ballot this year, based on the timeline for, um, for that to happen. And like I said, we take, we take, uh, the position that the school committee will be the one in the end, um, deciding on the name. Um, the where is here in this community, we wanna do as much outreach as we can to the community. Kathy talked about different, um, groups, such as the art community, the marine community, um, school communities, anyone that has an interest in the name of the school, and anyone who pays taxes for this school. And when we say interest, we did discuss the fact that, um, maybe there's some people in Gloucester, working in Gloucester, that might wanna be part of the naming of the school, but don't necessarily live here. Like people on the building committee, um, they don't all live in Gloucester, I think Donna Compton or someone- Crandore didn't live here, but we wouldn't wanna prevent them from, um, having the ability to assist us. Um, so the how, um, Joel gave us a lot of ideas by email in the beginning, there were great ideas, we, we talked about them. We talked about having, um, three to five names come to us at some point in the process that we decide to do. Um, Kathy and I came to the meeting with knowledge of Marblehead. So Kathy spoke to a Marblehead school committee member, and they named a school up there and brought up the idea of ballot boxes, and I'll let her talk more about that when we get there. And it, and coincidentally, I came to the meeting knowing that I do visit, um, Marblehead, and actually took place in the naming of something, it wasn't a school, by doing a ballot box that was put out in the community, uh, throughout Marblehead to name, I think it was like a lighthouse, or something that was going on up there. Um, so we talked about the process that, um, Kathy will inform us, but bottom line, we came out with the idea of putting, say, up to 30 or maybe more or less, depending on what's needed, um, drop boxes throughout the community, in like banks, grocery stores, um, the library, commonplaces, city hall, um, any business that wants to help us, where we can, um, get some input from the community, just, uh, just randomly, like when someone visits. We also talked about doing a virtual Dropbox by, like, an online, um, survey or something to that effect, and Joel brought up a good idea of putting, um, the QR code, you know, those little square codes, um, on each Dropbox that is within the community, that when someone scans it, it brings us to the website with all the information about the new school project and anything else we wanna add to it. And I'll let them talk more about the details when they get to talk to, but, um, overall, the idea was, um, to have drop boxes put out in the online survey, as opposed to doing, um, anything formal through a ballot initiative, or anything similar to that. So the when is, we decided, I think we, at least we discussed it, we thought it was important that, um, this school committee be, be the one to choose the name, we thought it would be fair to you and Joel, because, um, both of you have put in a lot of hard work over the years to get to where we are. And I just think it would be a nice gesture that this committee is able to do that, but at the same time, we talked about, if the process feels rushed, we wouldn't wanna continue that just for that sake. Um, but the timeline we, um, that we discussed, we're hoping that it seems reasonable. But at the same time, I'm sure we can anticipate that there'll be bumps in the road, and we, we may not be able to stick with it. So, um, the timeline, um, was to, um, put this before you tonight, knowing that we're not meeting again until August. The, I think it's around the August 11th. We scheduled another meeting at the beginning of August, because we felt like we had to stop our conversation where we were, we had great ideas coming forward, we needed feedback from the rest of the committee to see if we're on the right path. Um, but we're gonna meet again in the beginning of August, and if you like the path that we're on, then we're gonna, um, put our ideas together and come back with a plan to vote in early August, if possible. If it's, if we get there, it sounds like we can, because believe it or not, our conversations were great and quick and lots of, um, contribution. Um, and then from there, maybe drop boxes in the community from September to October, um, maybe four to six weeks. And then come back and then, um, have another process, which we haven't come up with yet, we've discussed it, um, it's kind of in the works, about how we would take all those ideas, um, those suggestions, and sort them and filter them into different groups, like if there's a nautical name, if there's a theme, I think Kathy brought up themes, if there's a nautical theme, we'll put, um, a lot, we'll put the names according to that theme, if there's a, a name theme, or we were talking about, if there was like a Pepsi theme, you know, like something we wouldn't think of, you know, try to separate the names and themes, and then decide how we're gonna filter them down, but at the same time, have a public hearing at some point too, to get feedback from the names that are getting put forward somehow. Like I said, we haven't finalized those plans yet, we just wanna see if we're on the right, are on the right path with the rest of the committee, before we dove into those. So I'll let Kathy and Joel fill in, um, talk more about-
So I'll just, um, so Laura had, uh, did this approach where everybody could drop in an idea or a name, um, and they got a whole bunch of feedback from the community on names, and then the school committee individuals have looked at the names, and then they discussed what resonated with them. So that's kinda where I was thinking, you know, maybe there are themes that some of us are more, um, that connect with more. And so that helped them whittle them down even further, and I, you know, at the end of the day, they kinda did a ranked voting to get to the top choices, they had, you know, public input, public hearing, and things like that before they got to their vote. I'm not sure it was 100% received, in terms of the name they picked, they said it, you know, never 100%. Um, but I think, you know, from my opinion, having the public really know that we care about, you know, creative ideas, or ideas of what a school should be named. I think we're gonna get a lot of really good ideas that might, um, you know, that, I think that's where it should come from anyway. I think the school, um, communities of East Gloucester and veterans, whether it's, you know, existing teachers, former teachers, former students, whatever, you know, what talks to them about this new combined school community, so I think by having this outreach, we can just kind of prompt the community as to what, you know, what we, what the background is, what we're hoping maybe they would think about and be inspired, and they would then put forth things that might resonate with us as to what a new school could possibly be made.
Cool.
Yeah, um, so another thing I would add is that, in our discussions, I think one of the things we definitely focused on, and that, I know I was, was important to me, and I hope it was important to the rest of the committee, was the, making sure there was community involvement at the outset, especially for contributions of ideas, and to not limit that, to which anyone who has a good idea, or a bad idea, or that, you know, it's an idea, right? And then use us as, assuming, a filtering mechanism, where that's, you know, like, you know, it gets put out, and then we receive it, and the seven of us filter it, and then it goes back out one more time, so okay, here, we filtered down to whatever, you know, we decide we're gonna do our top five, or top seven, or top eight, or top four, whatever we decide, right? It goes back out one more time to the same community, and, you know, and say, hey, you know, what do we think of these? And then comes back to us, and I was actually ambivalent either way about whether we left it with the committee to decide, or for the school committee, there's sentiment, have the school committee decide, and I have no problem with that. Um, as long as, again, the school committee, you know, after acting as a filter, goes back out for public one more time to hear from them as the, the, the shortlist, and then, you know.
So I think one of the things we, we talked about, to Joel's point, was that, um, we wanna give equal weight, but at the same time, don't want, uh, we wanna give equal weight, so that a group, what, no matter what the group is, can't organize and come up with more votes than another, and we may not necessarily be agree, agreement with that. I know when we went through this at the tech, Essex Tech, and we gave a lot of weight to the school community, because they're in the building, the parents, the, the kids are the ones that are going to the school, so, um, and, and rightfully so, because even our policy tells us that, but at the same time, um, don't wanna count, you know, get into the, how many of the school community voted this versus someone else, so we're just trying to figure out how we can be equitable, and, and hearing lots of ideas and opinions, but at the same time, don't give it to the name that has the most votes, if it doesn't necessarily seem like a good fit, even to us as the committee. So that majority thing is a struggle, and that's what, um, Joel, that's what we were talking about with Joel. And we also discussed whether you should have to give your name on the slip that you put with the the name of the person that is suggesting the name of the school, and we decided that, no, unless it doesn't matter, because people can just write in anyone else's names. So we were talking about all different little things, we were actually even trying to come up with names, and it's like, wait a minute, we're not here to talk about names, so.
So I have two questions to start, and one, are we prioritizing the East Gloucester vets community, I mean, the people who've gone to and will be going to this, to the school in any way?
So we, that's a good, to the point of, you don't mind me responding, so we're trying not to give extra weight, but when, of, of course, we're gonna put drop boxes at those, the school, let them do whatever way they want to, but other students could come up with ideas too, we talked about how the high school came up with the Great Cops for Kids, um, logo, you know, so you never know what ideas can be generated, no matter who it comes from, but at the same time, I understand that it seems right to do that.
And then the second part of that is, of course, there's a substantial, um, amount of members of that community who are not, uh, native English speakers, and who will be, not be participating potentially, if, if, we would need to be very careful to make sure that this, this process is really open to people who are not, um, whose, whose first language is not English, um, who will be attending this school.
So I can say to that, the one thing we did talk about, the superintendent being involved with, but then Joel offered he could too, was we talked about doing a survey that goes out to the school communities, and as you know, our surveys can be translated into different languages very easily. Um, so that would be a way to capture, um, those types of, um-
I just think that would be a priority.
Sure.
Um, to make sure that this is really broad, and, you know, because I think the tendency is that, you know, it's, it's easier to see these signs around town, you know, we, it's, it's a more, it's a broader, um, outreach, if we're really trying to reach.
There's also no harm in doing a quick, I'm sure we have the, the knowledge of what the top three language spoken in our household, and there's no reason that the drop boxes can't, if they have two sentences, can't have a few sentences in English, Spanish, Portuguese, whatever, you know, whatever the next one is, right?
And that kinda gets to the, um, sorry, Sam, um, the timeline, like, we need to make sure that, that outreach is, you know, is long enough, is broad enough, and is successful.
That's tricky.
But at the same time, we talked about not having it open up for a long time. You know, I mean, we gotta get the plan out there and, and known to everybody, but not leave it open for a long time, sorry.
Um, so I love the idea of drop boxes all over the city, I'm curious about the logistics around that, like, where are they coming from, are they getting built, are they gonna be launched?
You and your kids are gonna be doing it.
It feels like a really big project.
Yeah.
Um, so what, what, do, do you have any thoughts around that? Because I love the idea, but I just don't know if logistically it's doable.
So, another thing we can talk about, in my head, drop boxes don't have to be, I mean, like, the, I would hope that the message on these would be identical, but they don't have to be themselves physically identical, so, so Building Center, and I've had no discussion with them, Building Center says, yes, you can put one down here, and they wanna get a full address coffee can, and put our sign next to it and say, here's some, you know, old lumberyard slips right on the back of the lumber, lumberyard stuff, and put it in the coffee can, and we're getting these all to the school committee by September 15th, or the deadline is. And, you know, again, making a, Bank Loster says, oh, we have this really nice box, or, you know, or we have a, you know, one of those fish bowls you should drop business cards into with the sign, I really think we don't need to homogenize the sign and the information, yeah, we didn't talk about this previously, that was in my head, it was just a, you know, offer to make, right, if someone has a box, we need a box and provide them one, but otherwise, it's just receiving informal slips of paper, just, you know.
It's, it's, I mean, I was sort of imagining to reach some of the harder-to-reach families that might not be going into Bank Gloucester, might, like-
Well, that's what the survey is about.
Yeah.
When, it wasn't, excuse me, but when's the deadline?
We don't know, we don't know.
Uh, so-
We were trying to capture the information from September to October, if possible, figure it out.
So put them in their backpacks, and let them bring it home in all different-
Well, we can do a survey email, uh, to their, every parent's email, too.
And let them bring it home, and, you know, they'll get it back to you, bring it to your, you know.
I wanna understand when I have to put it for each, I mean.
Oh, whenever you want, yeah.
Yeah.
So I've got a lot of thoughts on this.
Okay.
Like, a lot, especially having, you know, constructed a whole, uh, very inclusive process in Brooklyn, and, and renaming a school that was, uh, it was a significant, uh, endeavor.
Everything in Brooklyn is significant.
This was also, this was actually renaming a school that this, the town decided to move away from the name, because they identified that the, the person who's in it was, was a slave owner.
Yeah.
You know, so it was, it was complicated lots, lots of ways. Um, so, and I, we haven't talked about this yet, you know, I bet, haven't, we haven't discussed it, and sort of thing, so, a couple of things that are really important to me are, that East Gloucester Veterans School are involved in, in a significantly substantial, substantial, substantial way. And I, I think of that as, um, you know, maybe they're the ones vetting the first round. You know, maybe they're the ones constructing the boxes, so, the kids, that sort of thing. But really having them in a very significant way, participating in students and families, and also folks who attended those schools, you know, as well, in the past.
So just so you know, Kathy brought up the idea of when we get all the names coming in, that we have teachers from both schools and students from both schools, helping whoever it is that's gonna gather all the information, you know, make it a big public event, but have the school community of those two schools involved in the process.
Great example, and just, you know, we can go even deeper on that, you know, and how we, how we-
I think we're gonna go back to the, to the policy, and have you come up with that.
Um, and then, uh, another piece is, uh, the timeline really matters a lot. And, um, I'll just be very direct, is, uh, I understand, one, we have Joel and John, Jonathan involved, and I, I appreciate that, that goal, um, and the value. But really, for me and our staff, and I think this committee as well, the focus this fall has gotta be on two things, I think. One is reopening school, and doing it very well, and, um, making sure we are paying attention to kids who have been in school, and families who are still not quite there, um, and supporting them very well, if you're very focused on that. Another piece is longer planning, okay, that's something that, strategic planning is, is hugely crucial, I think that has to be in the process in a broad ways, which I will present to you a plan to, how to do that. I, I don't see that, I don't see the urgency that maybe other folks are seeing in terms of, of naming the school. I do want it to happen next year, I would like it ideally to happen by, say, the spring, or that's April or May or March, that sort of thing, you know, April, I think April's been done. Have it, have it signed by, but I think December honestly is just, is too, too much, too fast, because it would, that would- Because that would require a whole bunch of work this summer to get up and running. And doing, and, and I'm not sure who does that work yet. Because I appreciate that, that you folks want to, but you are really hampered by lots of things. As soon as the three of you talking about something, it's a public meeting. And that requires a lot of other stuff to happen for it to make it a public meeting. Um, so, so anyway, those are my initial thoughts. Um, and I'm just happy to talk about it further because I think it's a super important process. And it's super important, that's inclusive, a lot of people involved, it takes a lot of work and thinking and planning to do it. That's, those are my priorities to have it do well.
So to just to, to push back on the, the timing, well, only clear, um, I think it was very gracious of Melissa. I, I'm not advocating that I have to make a vote on this. I, I know ego in this, but I'm happy to do it, you know. But you could literally on inauguration day, vote in the new slate of officers and take this vote and like, I wouldn't be upset about it. But the urgency, and this is, you know, this is anecdotal, this is my, my dealing with the, the citizens and neighbors of Gloucester and my line of work.
Yeah.
Is that a longer a plan sits out there, the longer resentment, anger and opposition festers and grows. The shorter you can get to a vote, the, the more likely you are to, to one, prevent festering of negative feelings. And two, begin the process of recovery, right? So when I go in a person in a neighborhood, this thing is a six month process. Those neighbors hate each other for the rest of their lives. If I get it done in six weeks, they might be upset, but they can start working to like get back along with each other despite, you know, whatever happened. And so my nervousness would be if we, this thing was a long process that stretches out nine months.
I don't mean August till May, I don't mean that, but just, I mean, starting later. Like I think starting this summer and early fall is very, very good.
Well, the other, the other part to that, my last part is why I appreciate that, like you and the staff are going to be super crazy busy.
We're not.
I don't think we're going to be as nearly as busy as we were certainly last fall as a committee. And, and also I don't, I actually, oh no, and hold the other, well, the other part of this, maybe, maybe I'll be trying to, you know, please absolutely slap me now if I'm totally missing this. In my head, yeah.
Wait, I got first lap.
Yeah, in, in, in my head, this isn't, you know, I mean, it's, it's an important thing, but the reality is like, getting drop boxes out is, is a weekend of, of, you know, of, if we have to make some of getting them, you know, it's solicitation and the, oh yes, is a very easy word of mouth, like, you know, manage these stories, be very quick to, yeah, you can have or no, you can have one, right? Then they sit, right? So then for four weeks, they're just sitting, we're not doing anything in the process, but, and they're just churning, right?
No, you got to do a lot of communication every single week.
What?
Otherwise they, they just sit there, no one's sitting in them.
Or they fill up and the people at the store are like, I don't know, like I'm not dealing with this.
We can check up on that.
Yeah, again, that, that, that seems like a heavy lifting. That's like, oh, make sure that we're active on Facebook and that's.
You just need to answer who does the work.
We, that's why I started off by saying, we do the work.
You are at your own limit in doing that.
Well, the other piece is.
The thing is can't be on a, on a meeting together.
Wait a minute, we can publicize our meetings and come here or go on Zoom in 2.2 seconds as long as we get 48 hour notice.
I think one of the flaws in our thinking is that we do need the school communities involved, which means principals. It means PTOs, it means people on the ground at those two schools.
But wait, now I'm going to get pushed back because we're, we're just trying to figure this out tonight because we're having another meeting. So we put the drop boxes out, we made the drop boxes, we put them out. Where, while they're out.
Who's going to create the communication as, well, I, I I understand your point, the longer processes, then it's not so good, right? But that means from start to finish of the actual process, not the planning part of beginning the process.
Fair.
Right?
Correct.
So all the planning or needs to be done well, so that when the process starts, it can happen over a, you know, pretty shorter timeframe, a well-known timeframe to the public, and so we come to a conclusion. So that's really where I'm hearing that, that whole planning part as to it, like what does the communication say? Who comes up with the communication? Who's going to reach out to Matt Fusco to say, how do we reach your families? Do we know how to reach Matt Fusco's families?
I thought we had an email address for all school employees that we send blasts and get out every day in our emails. I don't understand what that is.
All the websites and all the communications, which is back to us. And I'm really trying to say that September, October, for the, for the school communities and, and our staff is not the time. Okay, it's, it can be time for planning, putting things into place, okay? You know, but it can't be on execution and, and delivery. Just really urge us to focus on school.
There's also a campaign, like, you know.
What?
Right, like September, October.
Yeah.
It's campaign.
It's campaign and also vets, the vets community is going to have just transitioned into a new building. I mean, it's just, there's just a lot happening. I totally take your point, like there's just.
We're here to take his point, he's asking us back off.
Right.
Excellent translation.
Yeah, no, but it makes sense. I.
He's thinking about his teachers, he's thinking about his students, he's thinking about how it is, he's done it before. He's saying, give me time, you'll let us know, we'll do it and we'll go forward next.
Well, can I just say, I think what you're saying, if I'm right, is we can plan, but this we, this can't start.
Yes.
Like we can, I, I think personally.
We have to do the work to get it in place.
Right, and so, but I mean, we could come up with what you guys have started, Melissa, like.
Well, wait a minute, because it sounds to me right now like we need to hear from the superintendent and that's not going to be until the end of August. And so, which is okay.
I'm working online in the month of August.
No, 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 and rightfully so. I didn't, that, did it take no, nothing of that? You deserve months off. But all I'm saying is it kind of just changes everything going forward. And I know based on what I'm just hearing so far, I would throw this right out the window and wait till we hear from him because it sounds like we're not on the right track, which is okay, because that's why we're doing it.
They're going to have to rename a school, people can think about it, could be a project for your summer school to think what was going to happen in September. What are we like? I mean, it's going to be a topic around the city anyways.
It already is.
I mean, informally, we're all in agreement that the, I mentioned at the subcommittee and, and I think it has to just be said. There is an option for us to say, you know, we closed Fuller, the Fuller community didn't name a new school. We rebuilt West Parish, it was just called West Parish, we didn't discuss another name. We're rebuilding Vets at the same site. We could just avoid all of this and say, this is veterans. It was veterans, it is veterans, it's Webster Street, that, that's the school edge, right? And then we avoid all of this. This, whether it's a lot of work, like Ben is saying, or a medium amount of work, like I'm saying, it can all go to nowhere because we are, you know, working on this other important stuff. We just say, you know what, this is Veterans Memorial School, we are tearing down Veterans Memorial School, we are rebuilding Veterans Memorial School. And then it's over. I'm just saying, like, that's, that's an option, right?
Can I just say?
So there's a thousand options out there.
There's a thousand options, but I don't think that option gives us sort of the buildup of a community, which is what you need here, right? I mean, I think, I mean, correct, I mean, Ben, you've done this, right? And I know from family what the devotion school meant to people in Brooklyn.
Thank you.
Yes, so I get that. And it's, 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 I don't know that East Gloucester or Vets, those names have the same m- measure that that did, but I think that it's, it's a really amazing opportunity to build this community. And we don't want to, we want to get it right, you know, like we want these, these communities to come together to feel invested, to feel excited, to feel um, you know, like they're making a statement about the future.
That they're going forward together.
Right, they're going, and they're making a statement, they have agency. Right? So that's why for me, like, just calling it veterans is not.
Hey, listen, I'm listening to you, I, I, that's always important that, that, they just put out there, we talked about it, right?
Yes, I, but I, you know, I think you're on the right path. I mean, it just, all of the things that have been said, all seem, sound like reasonable approaches. I, I think we, you need to heed, heed what, what Ben is saying about involving the school community or, or, or employees, um, you know, in September and October.
Can I start some more trouble? Can I name the library?
To go on that, I, I think ideas.
I like to name it after Brian.
Me too.
Brian Ta, sorry.
We actually brought that up.
I think you should continue and, and refine and, and, and come up with more concrete planning.
We probably should.
Stop and wait for Ben.
It's so, because he's done a process before, it's not like he's making it up.
Yeah.
Also, right?
So is that, so is that.
If you didn't have any experience.
I did at the tech and it didn't, it, your, your process sounds longer than what we did. We had to bring in two schools together.
It had to be longer there, it didn't need to be longer here.
Well, I'd say we brought two schools together that weren't even in communication with each other.
Right.
We are here, they are.
Yeah, and, and that's, this, I mean, it was not emerging through communities you're describing, you're describing. That, that's, that is a big deal, but what I was trying to get is that I think the bones are really here. I mean, the approach and, and, and are, they're here, it's just about timing.
It's a timeline.
Yeah, so wouldn't it be that we'd still work this fall to figure stuff out, but then we'd say, oh, we, we've come up with a Dropbox plan and Dropbox are going out March fifteenth, would that be it?
Well, I think we should be.
Do you think we should move into that part?
I think, I mean, what I would suggest is, is the four of us work together to create the process.
Okay, and you're swamped and that's, so it'll be the four of us, it'll be the.
No, it's just about when we do it, you know, I, I could do so many things.
You're asking, you're asking for more time.
Maybe you went in on this, we, we, it happens, you make assumptions, we assume there was a, hey, Ben, guess what, we're just going to cut you out of this, you're like, oh, thank God.
I know.
Last thing I need to worry about is a school's name, thank you very much.
Now here you are telling us can't do it.
Whatever you decide, it's going to come to you anyway.
Definitely, thank you.
I mean, it's, it's.
Some possibility, they, they didn't even have any of the meetings, I have no idea how it became, you know.
It's not, it's not possible, you know?
I'm going to get them, report it to him.
So, so I think we could come up with a good process, good timeline, and I think we're.
But you went in on that, you went in on that process development.
Yes, even if that's me trying to keep myself out of it, I'm not going to do that.
All right, so do you have enough feedback?
Well, cancel my meeting in August and whenever Ben's ready to let us know, we'll go it.
I think we have, we have a working meeting in August.
Okay.
When, when are you, when are you out?
The first two weeks in August heads the conversation.
There you go. All right, do we have enough to move?
Yeah, we quit, we're done.
All right, you can't.
We're going back to the policy. So let me say, we're going back to the policy, so in October. Thank you to a presentation to the school committee on how we're doing as far as.
All right. Moving on, we have to approve the summit of evaluation of the superintendent of schools. Um, we, um, at, at our last meeting, we evaluated the superintendent and it was, some people expressed the, the concern that they would like to reconsider after hearing other people's discussion. That has happened, I sent out um, uh, a re-calibrated evaluation, um, summit of evaluation, the comments are all, were, were recorded in the, in, in the minutes. And um, the um, so you have it, I, I, I sent it out this afternoon and uh, I will just say one thing about it, there was no, um, everything was increased, everything, all the changes were in, increased to, on the positive side as opposed to uh, anybody deciding, no, I was made, I, I gave him too high a grade, I should have flunked the class.
I wish most of my regreating not been put that way, but.
So um.
For the right that I can do in one.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion?
No, I just wanted to let everyone know again, that I, I, we, I didn't need to, because what I said was publicly, what I said again, is that I worked differently than you. And what I worked with them was a great teamwork. We did, I mean, you have your schools, we had the city, I mean, we did great teamwork. I mean, for the first time him jumping on and, you know, seeing a new, never mind being a superintendent of new school, then you get the pandemic, then you shut down and then you go to, come to my office, I called them both to my office. And we were working great and, and it's the main concern is the wellbeing of everyone else. So we had a different relationship, maybe moving forward would be different to once schools open in September and you know what, I, we don't have a pandemic. And then I can evaluate, is what I evaluate on his leadership, he did a great job.
Any other discussion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Spring?
Yes.
Mayor taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Has a petition?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it passes unanimously. That, we have a couple of grants that we need to accept, oh, oh no, we have one grant that we need to accept uh, from Gloucester Education Foundation in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars into the Gloucester High School Mentor Program.
So moved.
That's great.
And this is mentors for students, not teachers. Is there, uh, we got, do we got a motion or second? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
This, uh, what I understand, it's a partnership with Wellspring and Wellspring has been doing some mentoring in this expansion.
Some mentoring, right, and, and the work it's going to do this spring was Aria and Craig Bach and others meeting with students to learn from them, uh, what would be helpful in that training so they can design a program from those conversations. It's been a lot of work, it's been two students that.
Any further discussion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote? Yes.
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 Uh, okay, we'll move on to the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Committee update. A meeting next week. The um, they submitted the sixty percent divine design development to MSBA. Or they will be, that's what we'll be meeting to approve. Um, today they did the reconciliation and I was, um, I, uh, reconciliation is they, they take the design development at the point where it is and they bring in the estimators and, and just check to see if we're you know, on track. Uh, and because if any, if we've gone over budget, then they have to make adjustments, we have to make adjustments. Um, I don't know, um, I was looking at the, uh, the, what they sent me and I couldn't figure out what, what it really meant. It looks to me like there's a, like a million six difference.
I don't, I don't want to share the numbers just because it's in flux, they're in the process, but well, I'd like to report what they, what they shared, what we discussed at school building committee. Uh, whatever, two weeks ago, um, except for our last school meeting, which was, um, as folks probably have heard, lots of changes in cost increases. Now it looks like level might be going down, you know, in, in near future, but steel is certainly high. So they expect that, um, that they're working through the two estimates again, from the owners, project manager and from, um, from the construction and from the, uh, the design group. Uh, the recantabos that they're working on today, from that, once they reconcile, they come to agreed upon numbers for each of the different parts of the, of the designing costs, the structure costs, sorry. Then you'll see if the new design engineering is likely, we'll be needing that engineering, which means making modifications to the design or materials often, uh, because they'll be higher than they were. Remember, we were right on target three months ago, four months ago. Now because of the changes in cost things, we will be above target probably. Um, but they're continuously built in and so that's the work and building to be able to do it next week and plus to uh, just make, make some of those decisions to get it back down, uh, for the just, we're just beginning that process.
What is the timeline to stop building the school? In other words, I'm just trying to think, we're buying the materials.
Yeah, so.
How, how, is it six months out?
They do different, um, uh, big packages different times and steel is the big one, obviously.
Yeah, we had the tech.
We, and really, people are expecting steel is going up, they're expecting it to go down. When we use a big package is will actually matter a whole lot. So there's a big package uh, in August and then another one, I think in October.
Okay.
Um, uh, and so it just matters what those big packages are for. And steel is going to be a, a probably one, right? Because it's, it's very likely that, um, the, the big one's higher, then coming lower. So that's just the, the fluctuation we're dealing with and it's just gotten a lot trickier in the past, like six, eight weeks, you're honest.
And when is demolition scheduled?
Um, the fall.
The fall.
But we're still in the permitting process, um, that's still going along.
I'm just trying to think of the timeline, not anything other, I'm just trying to think, okay, when would they buy so and so materials?
Yeah, the, one of the discussions we've had is that, um, is that you, there are also besides cost increases, there's not being able to get things. And, you know, so you're weighing on one hand, ordering now to ensure that you have it when you need it, but paying the higher price or holding off, hoping the price drops. So there's, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of things going on.
But it is possible that we could be on budget, but not on time and that might be okay if we push off a little.
You know.
Well, a little bit, but not as much as, as the alternative.
You know, just
If you could, if you then hit, hit the, you know, you know, your, your lucky fortune is the, of the cost, because those have gone down, and if not but it also matters length, that's what I'm like, you know.
And, and the other information that we've gotten is that, um, you know, that, the actual labor, um, is, is available and not, you know, that, because the people aren't working, because it, you know, the big companies are not working as much as they, they would like to, or it's every carpenter in town's out of straight, I think.
Yeah.
But, um, but, but, there's not a lot of cranes and, you know, going up. So this, this, that, but we are meeting next week on Wednesday.
So the bids are still going out, right?
We have to get, no, the bids aren't even, the early bid packages go, is out, what, what, what is out for bid right now is the mitigation of the, um, of the, uh, of the buildings, so you have to remove all the hazardous materials before you tear it down, and then the demolition. And things like putting up fences around, around the property, but that's it. It's called the early bid package, and, and the next thing that would be bid would be the, the site prep, you know, the, any ground improvements and that kind of thing that has to be done. Leveling off the field and, and, and that. But the goal is that they get cement in before December. You know. That's sort of the timeline. The, um, I can talk a little bit about the, uh, we, the, the, the lawsuit, um, is, as we spoke before, is basically holding up the MSBA from, um, entering into the, um, project funding agreement.
We're gonna waive it today.
I know, that's what I was gonna talk about. The, the people who filed the lawsuit have added another item to the lawsuit that basically says, um, the MSBA has failed to enter into a project funding agreement during, in, in, in a certain period of time, that they're supposed to do it within. So we asked for a waiver, um, for that time period, and it was granted today.
Actually, sorry. We, they asked for a waiver from us. We had to give them permission, it was okay, not that, at the 14 days, which is, which is why it's confusing, because
And didn't it work? It was, it's an MSBA policy, not a law. It's an MSBA policy that you enter into it
Right.
in agreement with a certain amount of days, but because of this lawsuit, you can't, so essentially they're waiving their own policy, and we're giving them the waiver so that we're not holding them accountable. It's that simple. Not some big violation of a law or regulation.
But it was just another thing, another thing.
Frivolous.
So, and we're in the, we're in the permitting process, as, that's, that's what we're at.
In July.
Anything about, anything else about that? Uh, there's a couple of things that we need to bring up before we go. One is, um, the superintendent's contract states that we, um, after his evaluation, we have to negotiate.
Do you wanna say anything? That St. Anne seems to be moving along
Oh, yeah.
timely, so that the kids and the staff will be able to get in there, find your time.
Your painting and, and repair.
Can I ask you something? Did you go talk to the traffic commission to change the road again? Remember, we, when you had West Parish there, we had to do half the day to Smith Street, that you, the buses couldn't go down? Are we looking at that? And we wanted it at the last minute, and have traffic.
Do we have to go to the commission to do it, or can we just do
It's nice to ask them to do that, so they put it, you have to put an ordinance, you have to put a temporary ordinance.
City council approved it, and they typically
I can ask for it, but you need to let me know when you want me to ask the traffic commission.
We will do that, but what we first need to do is, is a big difference between having the vets kids going to St. Anne's and having West Parish, where we had to bus every single one of them. You know, we had four or five buses
One bus, or no buses? You still need, I mean, you're gonna have parents, you're gonna have everything else, that street is congestive, and Smith Street is to two-way, and every, if we give them enough notice, everyone gets used to it.
Yeah.
Remember, there's shitty park, that's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
And I think we should do what we did before, too, was when we went to the neighborhood and talked, we had a meeting at St. Anne's church downstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before we, um, moved in.
We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, it was simple, it was like from one time in the morning, and then, and in the afternoon, it was fine.
So just, just a two portions of the day?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like a permanent one-way.
Like at East Gloucester.
Well, you can go look what we have. And just duplicate it, and we'll make sure that the lights are working, you know?
Yeah.
Turn it back on.
Turn it back on, you know?
They're on for three years, they're supposed to close.
Yeah, I know, and by the time we shut them off
Well, they were, I mean, we need to shut, we need to shut those out.
You know, and, 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 right, and then, you know what, don't forget that, you know what, um, we, and I, Jonathan was in, so was in, to back at growers to make their little box for the gardeners for the kids, and, you know, you know, you wanna make sure that it, it's a new school, it's a different school for them, but they remember things that they're gonna do at, uh, veterans, you know, they love doing their garden, they love doing certain things.
When are they moving in?
September.
No, what are they gonna do before then?
Oh, they're, well, first, first they're moving out, uh, and they're finished packing this week and moving out next week.
Out to where?
They're moving
Out of veterans into
Out to where? To St. Anne's. So they're gonna be in
Yeah.
next week.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, the, 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 oh, the things will be in, actually, and, um, yeah.
Yeah, they're still painting and
Boxes will be Boxes will be there.
Yeah, I think I go boxes, probably moving after the fourth, I guess, the week after that. Okay, but, but
So we'll just throw in a Dropbox.
Dropbox.
So don't forget, um, you have to also, you make sure that we get the right pocket for the teachers to pack.
Yep.
Let them know where they can, and we get the, you know, the school that they can't use, the Bourbon Field area, I mean
Can't block yellows out.
Church, yeah, so
It's changed, yes.
That's all. Same, same thing we did for West Parish, we just need to
Yeah. Modify it first, for, for, for that, so, okay.
There will be slightly less.
Yeah, it's a smaller school.
Yeah, it'll be less, I, I, I understand that, but you know what, the neighborhood
Yeah.
and I know that neighborhood, I play concert for them. Um, so, you know what, I know what goes on there, and, and I know that they just want some courtesy, you know, I have my seniors at shitty park. And you know what, they get, they bump up, they can't even stand, so you know what, any change, I can't even, so I thought it was an island.
What was that all?
I was about to put an umbrella and sit there.
Because there's usually no stop sign there, and then I was at, I saw this, Melissa Cox, Ward Council at the time, was like, hey, you know, they're looking for stop signs, they put a stop sign on the sidewalk. But if you, as you navigate from like tallies toward Burnham's, right, and, and, um, you get the stop signs on your, your right, you don't see it, and someone was blowing the stop sign, because it was like off into your right, so they had to bump the sidewalk out to get a stop sign, we could see it, it's made an intersection, actually, and everyone stopped.
Well, and Shepherd Street was that excuse. What happens is, when you get money from the state, and they come to do it, you have to go compliance with the idea. And now, because of the new motorized, whatever, I says, well, you made them an island. That's not, I hate them, all of them. So we're gonna see what we can do, we, we took the money, we're gonna ask for a waiver to cut them. Yeah, that one seems like an island, I don't care what anyone says. The other one I don't like either, the Cosco
Can we, can we, can we move on?
Well, that's what you need to look, what you're gonna have with your buses, they're not gonna make that corner at all, ever. They won't, I'm sorry.
All right, um, as I stated, the superintendent's contract states that we have to negotiate, um, pay, any pay increase after his evaluation. And it also says it's supposed to be done before, um, June 30th.
Need to apply for a waiver.
Well, we could, we could, just ask them for permission to, uh, extend that deadline.
Get you next year, come on, bud.
But I would also would like to refer to the, um, the personnel subcommittee to to meet with the superintendent.
So forth.
Waiver's granted.
Waiver's granted, okay.
He wants to.
All right.
I'm meeting until August, is that okay? As long as what?
I don't care when you do it.
All right, um, the other thing is
Anyone who negotiates in good faith gets retroactive. Keep that in mind.
All right, um, and I don't know if you've all got noticed, I got one, the MASC and MASSS conference is actually, and, um, is gonna be in person uh, this year in November, and, um, if you're interested in going, we should, uh, let Stephanie know, uh, because if we get our applications in first, we get a break.
Yeah, you have to get them by the first week of July, so you would have to make a decision real quick.
Yes, Stephanie sent that to end this cycle.
It's apt.
It's in high end.
During.
No, it's right after.
It's right after, it's the weekend after elections. It's always, it always is, it's, it's really worthwhile, it's, 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 there's a lot of, uh, good workshops.
I've done down the back in a day.
Yeah.
I have relatives that can stay.
You, you can, you can stay there, this is usually, the day you wanna be there is Thursday. It was when, and then Friday morning, it's usually pretty good, usually by Friday afternoon, it's, that's going downhill. And Saturday, Saturday.
Well, now they put a lot on Saturday to get you to stay.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, we look at it, they, they realize the math.
Usually Saturday is just
She sent out a reminder to us.
Okay.
They did, we know they did.
Is there anything else we need to, uh, take up before we, uh
We had a pajama, didn't we?
No, but it's been lovely meeting in person.
Yeah.
Why not? I'm so happy. I'm not, I have time to, I'll
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So, I, I, I.
Okay. Full vote?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Yes.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Maria.